Cues.
Ellie, he was talking to you.
All right. Thanks. Thanks, y'all. Bye.
Where are you, Ellie? I'm trying to bus me at Wes.
Yes, I am at Wes.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Sorry about today. It was to today was my uh today. Today was my day, one of the days this week to get to be principal and vice principal and dean at the at Mount Greylock. And it was fun and fascinating and met some new folks and saw some old friends and uh and it was good. Almost almost recruited Kiva after our conversation this morning, Christina.
She was ready. She was ready to put up her.
The administrative intern.
Yeah.
Administrative intern.
She was ready to show up at district office.
I was picturing her telling one of her classmates, um, that's Ms. Conroy. Is is Conroy to you for today? Thank you.
Julia says she'll be here in three minutes. Hi, Charlotte.
Hi, Jose.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Carrie.
Hello, everyone.
We're waiting for Julia and Steve. Are we waiting for Mr. Louis Jake?
I think that Dan is gonna be on at some point, probably a little closer to when he gets here. But I'm also prepared to talk about their field trip request. And I know you as a parent have uh maybe some experience with that with that particular set of trips too.
Definitely. Curtis, are you there? Probably rolling around in his kitchen. Okay, good. Holding on for dear life. Carrie, did you just or did you talk to Steve today? Is he planning on attending?
Yes, he is. Um, he phoned into our finance committee meeting. He was in transit, but I think he said he was gonna be joining the meeting.
Okay. Hi, Julia.
If you need.
There he is. Hi, Steve.
Hi, was not able to get on with my first device, but fortunately have a backup.
Perfect. Okay, so everybody you need here, Jake.
Yeah.
Okay, so Ursula will not be attending tonight, so let's get started. I would like to call the Mount Greylock Regional School District School Committee to order. It is Thursday, March ninth, twenty twenty-three, six oh two P M. We are meeting remotely via Zoom. If everyone could say their name and state that they are here from the school committee, that would be great. We can go alphabetically last name.
Oh, in here.
Conry here.
Constantine here.
Elfin Byrne here.
Green here.
Miller here. I've got to remember I'm after Carrie tonight.
That's right. Thank you. And Ursula is absent. At Mount Greylock Regional School District, our mission is to create a community of learners working together in a safe and challenging learning environment that encourages restorative-based processes, respect, inclusive diversity, courtesy, integrity, and responsibility through high expectations and cooperation, resulting in lifelong learning and personal growth. Next up on the agenda is public comment. I don't have anyone signed up for public comment. And I don't see anyone on Zoom who is a member of public. So we will move on to the student spotlight and I will turn it over to Charlotte.
Hi, everyone. I hope you had a great couple of weeks. In student council, we recently reassessed all of our subcommittees and refined them to Greylock Talks, bathroom signage, feminine hygiene products, and in the back of our minds, as always, electric car chargers and school start times. However, with both of those, we've kind of faced a little bit of a stagnation. In Greylock Talks, the we met with Koti White this past week and plan on bringing in a variety of foreign college students to speak about their countries. Koti was incredibly helpful and the school most likely get to hear from students from Kazakhstan, Ukraine, and a couple of other countries. The Feminine Hygiene Committee found success in adding and relocating the hygiene products in the into the all-gendered bathrooms. There were originally products in the toilets restroom, however, however, they were often misused and had to be reduced. So from for the subcommittee, it was a great mediation between the wa- waste from the middle school and the students who were respectful enough and still needed them. And we heard from a constituent about the concern for the labeling of the all-gendered bathroom. Although the student council hasn't has not acted or expressed opinions on our stance, we do plan on looking into different signage options for maybe something more inclusive. For overall school updates, Oliver, the school musical had a fan had fantastic three performances. Mr. Welch, Ms. Vannett, and Sam Tucker Smith were all incredibly diligent in organizing the forty students who were members of the play, whether they were backstage or acting. The play even had a great review in the Berkshire in the Berkshire Eagle this morning, which was a great highlight. For the boys' basketball team and their head coach, Mr. Thistle, they have made it to the quarterfinals of the M I A A Division Five State Tournament. As twenty-two seed playing against eleventh and then the sixth seed, the M G H S team made quite the impression even having even after having to travel over a thousand miles, including this Friday's game. Driving as far as Salem definitely didn't affect their impressive performance. That's all I have. That's all I have for tonight, and thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Charlotte. Okay, next up on the agenda, approval of minutes. Um, I would like to make a motion to approve the February ninth, twenty twenty-three minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Carrie, seconds. Any discussion on those minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Bo and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin Byrne, I.
Green, I.
Miller, I.
Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, next up, we have the director principal reports. And I think the first up is Ellie with the Panorama Survey Updates and Dates.
All right, um, I'm going to take a few moments to talk about the Panorama Survey. Jake reintroduced what we were doing at the last school committee meeting. Um, but I'm going to dive in a little bit further and talk about what we've done to set up our surveys, who we will be surveying and about what, and then what we'll do with those survey results. Um, Panorama's mission is to support educators to improve student outcomes with data. And Panorama has made up of former educators, software developers, designers, researchers, um, and education professionals out in Boston. They have supported over ten million students in over six hundred districts across the country. Um, they've worked with some smaller districts to some really large districts like Detroit Public Schools and the public schools in D C. Why Panorama? Um, one of the district improvement plan goals was to identify and execute a tool to effectively gather data relative to a sense of belonging in our school and our district communities. Um, and I Panorama was identified because it's a tool that will help us be better informed beyond just conversation um, to really gather some measurable outcomes, um, measurable data to improve outcomes for our students. And the why why we're doing this is to listen to the members of our school community to measure the effectiveness of belonging, diversity, equity, inclusion um, in our schools. We want to gather input from students and families we serve and from the building-based staff. Um, so that way we can have more meaningful conversations with our larger community. So far, what we've done is we've determined the goals and the topics we're going to use from Panorama. They have a wide range of topics we could choose from. Um, and we really pared down topics that would one make surveys a reasonable length and to give us the data that we're looking for. Um, we then made a project timeline, which was to launch at some point this spring. And then we needed to prepare our surveys. So we worked with social workers from all three schools, school psychologists and guidance counselors. And we took a day to have a workshop where we looked at draft surveys from the topics we chose and pulled apart kind of what data we could get from them. We identified any questions that might need further a further look once they're answered. Um, and we tried our very best to make sure that the questions would be um geared toward our community and reflective of everybody who would take them. Um, it was a really thoughtful day where we took the time to look at every single survey that we are going to administer and decide, okay, is this asking the right question? Um, and is it going to give us the feedback we want? So then our next step is to launch the survey. We will be launching the surveys Friday, March seventeenth, and they will stay open for a week. Um, and we'll give people a reminder to fill out the surveys. They're really accessible. They can be accessed on any device, or we can provide paper copies um, to parents and guardians and staff members and students if needed. Um, they are available in multiple languages, so families can take them in a language that they would prefer. After we close our surveys, we're going to take some time to analyze those results. And Panorama will partner with us because they know um, their data really well and talk us through the results that we got and then compare them to the national norms. Um, and that will help us facilitate our conversation and be able to share those results. Then we can identify actions that we might want to um, use at our schools to follow up with our partners and community members. This first survey is really going to be a baseline for us. Um, and because of that, we decided to have our surveys be anonymous, um, except for our fifth and sixth grade students. Um, so seven through twelve students, staff, um, and community members' responses will be completely anonymous. It won't be tied to somebody's actual like identification number per se. Um, but our students in grades five through six, in order to get that feedback and possibly be able to follow up on any results, we wanted to um, keep those tied to those students. I'm going to take a moment to share a chart that identifies the topics that we're going to cover and who we're going to ask. Um, I thought that would be super duper helpful. So give me one second. Got too many screens up. All right. Right, um. So we are going to be asking our families about their school fit, school climate, barriers to engagement, um, as well as school safety. We're going to be asking our students, um, this says grades three through twelve because we can ask our students in grades three and four. But when we looked at the surveys, the reliability was much higher than grades three and four, which is why we decided to just do five through twelve. Um, school and classroom climate, teacher-student relationships, belonging, mindset, grit, school safety, valuing of school and classroom engagement. We'll also be asking our staff, both instructional and non-instructional staff about school climate, staff leadership relationships, educating all students, staff-family relationships, grit, cultural awareness and action, and professional learning about equity as well as belonging. And we identified common themes across those three um, groups. And in the staff section, you'll see it says instructional and non-instructional. That includes our B and G staff, um, our nurses, our paraprofessionals, our custodial staff, um, our cafeteria. We wanted to really include everybody's voice. All right. And then what are we going to do next? Um, our next steps are to inspire reflective practice, to compare our results to national norms, and to identify opportunities for improvement and build on our successes. Um, the best part about following up is we have some really great tools at our fingertips that we're already implementing, such as second step, positive behavior supports and restorative practices. And Panorama values those as well because they're research-based, and it will allow us allow us to leverage the tools that we already have. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Two, two logistical questions, super easy one to answer anyway. Could the bus drivers also do the survey? You name, I know they're not employed by the district, but often they see things on the buses that people might not see in the school.
We could certainly Julia talk with Carolyn from Do Four, and uh, that's a really good idea. Not, I'd not considered that, but but happy to have that conversation. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Um, the other question is, if you could, I I didn't fully understand why grades five and six will be tied to their student ID number. And and I guess in part also wondering, will you be able to break out the data? Like, what are the different ways you'll be able to break out the data um, by grade, by demographic, by all that?
Yes, so grades five and six, um, the way the classroom surveys are put together, there is a logistical component where in order to get elementary school classroom feedback, we have to break them out um, by student and give them their own individual link. And also kind of on before we knew that piece of it, when we were talking as a group, we felt it was really important with the younger students, if there was a response that maybe was a more concerning than we expected or something that surprised us, we wanted to be able to follow up with the students. Whereas in grades seven through twelve, um, the high school staff felt really strongly that students know where to ask for help or how to follow up if they had questions about the survey. The structures are just different in the schools, um, and so we wanted to be able to have that follow up. And as far as the demographic breakdown, um, there are background questions in every survey where students, families, and staff can self-report their demographic information. And then we can slice and dice the results based on those demographics. And they are specific by school, um, so we can break it down by school, by grade level, by like, we can kind of slice it however we would like to. Um, I was actually going through today and making all the school-specific links, and there's a lot of links. And it will require double and triple checking um, by myself and everybody who worked on the surveys.
Thank you, Ellie. Any more questions?
Carrie has a.
Yeah, so I have a question about, so Ellie, you mentioned that this is the first time that we're using Panorama. This is a baseline, but we have done other surveys um, about belonging and some of the issues that you're hoping to address in this survey. So will there be um, any, will we have any way of comparing the data of to those previous surveys?
I I will jump in here, Ellie, if you don't mind, and then you can you can jump in after. Um, Carrie, I I would say, you know, at least for during my time here, and I and I'm much cloudier on prior to that. I think um, Courtney Tunis's work, the the Mount Greylock Listening and Learning Project serves as maybe the the foundational baseline. And then um, because the ultimate domains that were chosen to pursue to look at are are not really that unlike uh, the work that that Courtney did going back to October of uh, of twenty twenty-one, I think. Um, so so that's sort of the foundation, and we 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 won't have an electronic means to to sort of put those together, to juxtapose them or or overlay them. But but we can do that by hand based on the data that Courtney left us. So I I I don't know about going further back in time than that. But our our intention moving forward is that the Panorama Survey would be a um, very likely a three times a year event um, to do because really it does not take that much time. Um, and uh, and and will allow us over years to see if some of what we're doing is working, to see growth, to see stagnation, to see decline. Uh, although hopefully that's few and far between. So Ellie, I don't know if you have anything to add to that or not.
No, I was going to, yes, I was going to add that we can also survey. We can change our survey topics over time if we feel we need to. Um, we can keep them consistent over time. There's a lot of, there's ability to kind of analyze the data and say, okay, is this really what we want, what we want to look at? And if we feel we're missing a piece, we can then add in a topic or we can take one out. Um, so that's really nice, and to see the growth over time um, is something I'm really looking forward to as well. Because when you're comparing two different survey instruments, um, it can be helpful, but to have something that's normed where we're asking similar questions around the same topics, I think will be really valuable to us moving forward.
Julia, I see you have another question.
Yes, thank you. Um, I should have started my last questions with a um, a moment of gratitude to say, um, thank you for using this survey. I I knew about it a number of years ago. I think it's fabulous, and I'm so excited Mount Greylock is using it, the district. Um, I am also curious about, you described the results will come back, you can slice and dice them in different ways, and that will lead to um, kind of action plans or efforts that may um, hopefully yield growth in culture and sense of belonging, et cetera. Awesome. Who does that part of the work? Is that something that is the same small group? Does that information come back to teachers? Like, how does that, how does that unfold? Do we see that data? I, how does that work?
You, you, yes to all of the above. Everything that you said is a yes in different ways. Um, there there, there is a layer of folks, um, in- including the 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 really the mental health um, and guidance folks that 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 Ellie helped facilitate putting this all together, that will have really access to all the data that we have across the district. Um, and 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 this can also grow with time as you move forward, giving the survey multiple times. Um, there there are pieces that a group will have, you know, including the building principals uh, to really everything across the district so they can, so we can speak in an informed way with one another across the three schools and including the central office. There are pieces then that teachers will have access to. We we will certainly take sort of the big reports that say, you know, here's where you are relative to the other four million students who take this across the country and this, 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 and this. And that's something that we would anticipate bringing back to the school committee perhaps posting on the website because we do want families to see, you know, uh, we we want our staff to see their their, so so there will be like multiple channels of of how and with whom this is shared out.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Ellie? Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, we have two overnight robotics team field trips to look at. And I think Dan Louie is here to talk to us about that.
No, I wasn't being told. I wasn't told that I'd be talking about it.
Oh.
I'm happy to, though. I can turn on my video. I'm sorry, I haven't done video in a long time, which I'm very thankful for, but uh, great relief. Yeah, so um, the robotics team uh has two competitions planned, two first robotics competitions planned, uh, uh, one in Springfield and one in Hartford. Uh, they're overnight trips for our students. And uh, we do, uh, we've done this. I think this is gonna be our sixth year doing doing these trips, and uh, we'd like to go again.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. And I I would just add that the the transportation for these particular trips is a little different than than other um, trips that we do. This is be because it's overnight and it is um, it it's the students need to, you know, there's the event, the first ones at Western New England University, that the students do have a need to in the evenings be transported somewhere for dinner. Um, the difficulty of getting bus drivers to go and do overnight trips and then be available for chauffeur services. So this is a piece of our practice is that that these are students who have permission to ride with with other students' families. And um, so we have waivers, we have, we collect um, insurance documentation from the folks that are identified as drivers and appreciate Dan and and Lindsay uh, working with this office to make that happen. So um, we're, we're really excited, glad that the the, you know, grateful to Dan and and the students and um, and and the folks outside of the school community that make this possible. And as Dan and I were discussing briefly yesterday, it would be amazing if there was yet another trip going to a national level competition at the end of these two. So um, thanks, Dan, for for your leadership on this and your students' leadership. And we're, we're excited to have the students uh, do this pending approval.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so we have two different field trips to vote on, and I would like to make a motion to approve the robotics team trip to Springfield, Massachusetts, March sixteenth through March eighteenth. Do I have a second?
Steve, I'll second. And can I make one slight change? It should say Western New England University, not Western New England College.
And Steve, I know you pointed that out to us yesterday. We were not able to get that change made today, so thank you for that clarification.
That's fine. I I just. That's fine. I just wanted to make sure that it gets.
Appreciate it.
Okay, any, so we have a motion for Western New England. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion on that trip? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Bo and I.
Conry, I.
Constancy, no.
Elfin, bye, no.
Green eye.
Mila, I.
Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. I would like to make a motion to approve the robotics team trip to Hartford, Connecticut, March 31st through April 2nd. Do I have a second?
To make it easy for the minutes, I'll second, Mila.
Great. Any discussion there? Julia?
Just really quickly, I wanted to say thank you to this group as well from the school committee. This is, this is a phenomenal opportunity for our students. Thank you. You know, to the team that's taking them.
Yes, and I would like to make a request that when we go back to in-person, at some point, the robotics team come in and show us the robot. So don't hit us with anything. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Bo and I.
Conry, I.
Constancy, no.
Elfin, bye, no.
Green eye.
Mila, I.
Okay, thank you. That motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Louie.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Okay, moving on to the next agenda item, we have the field and track project funding discussions.
So you all may recall at the last meeting, we took a vote as a school committee to bring a request to the towns to borrow up to $1.8 million in order to help fund the track and field project. Since our last meeting, we have received some feedback from our town officials from both towns and have had further discussions. I believe the word is iterative, right? It's an iterative process. And we've done our best to incorporate both the feedback from this committee and from the town finance committees, select boards, town managers, and to take into account all that our towns are currently dealing with. And we have, we are coming to tonight with a slightly different plan. And that plan, there is a document in the packet, which with any luck, you've had a moment to review. But the difference, the main difference in the two plans is that the, instead of the school committee reserving $1 million for renewal, the plan would be to actually use the full gift, the full amount available to us in the gift, to finance the track and field project and to take the balance of what is needed for the project and bring that to the towns for a shorter term borrowing than the 1.8. So it would likely be closer to 0.8, right? This is a rather major shift, right, for the committee, which previous iterations of the committee had voted to keep a million dollars in reserve for a renewal fund. The message that we're getting very clearly from our town officials is that we want to find other ways to help look toward the maintenance of all our school buildings, not just Mount Greylock, but the two elementary schools, which are also aging. And one of the ways that towns can help school districts do this is by creating stabilization funds. And this is something that the committee has talked about as recently as 2020. It hasn't yet gone to the towns, but we, we're now in a position where both town finance committees, at least members of those committees, are suggesting that this is something that it might be a good time to consider this. So that's later on the agenda. And there is a motion for that, but we'll, we'll get to it in, in good time. Right now, we want to discuss the first point, which is how does the committee feel about using the full amount of the Williams College gift toward the track and field project? And not at all relinquishing our responsibility to the long-term maintenance of Mount Greylock, but sharing that responsibility and the planning for that responsibility with our member towns. So that's the gist of it. As I said, there's a document in the packet, so questions, Julia?
I thought I might just chime in with a couple extra thoughts here. One important thought is that we discussed was that we would go to a maximum up to $800,000. So we're still going to work to fundraise and try to minimize that as much as possible for the towns. The second thing is, I was a strong proponent of maintaining that reserve because my belief was we are in partnership with our towns and our towns wanted that. And so I really appreciate the conversations that Joe and Jake have had with the towns because it feels like a real partnership. And I, it sounds, sounded to me like the towns, they want to see success in the schools and the buildings maintained, and they need to balance the tax rolls at this point. And this was their request. So I, I just wanted to kind of be on the record to say, as somebody who wanted to make sure that we kept money in reserves, this is a plan that I really can support.
Thanks, Julia. Yeah, Steve, and then I also want to make sure Joe has a chance to add anything to it. Joe is responsible for drafting the memos, so thank you very much for doing that and for laying it all out so clearly. Yeah, Steve.
Well, I'm going to defer to Joe and let Joe speak first and then I'll speak after, if that's okay.
I think Carrie and Julia collectively said things far more eloquently and briefly than I did in the memo. So if there are questions, I'm certainly here to answer them, but I'll defer to all of you.
All right, so I've deferred and you've deferred back the deferment. Okay. So similar to what Julia said, my position has been strong for years that I feel it is time that this is built. We know you're closing out, you're on six years with all the discussions. I've always liked keeping the gift as large as possible in reserve because historically the Williams Endowment does well. As long as we've informed the, you know, towns and the finance committees of the consequences of the decisions and people are making informed decisions, I'm happy to support what they want. So thank you.
Christine, if it's okay with you, I'll go ahead and make the motion, then we can have further discussion. Is that okay?
I think that makes a ton of sense.
Okay, so the first motion is to plan to fully spend the remainder of the Williams College capital gift to Mount Greylock Regional School in the process of completing the field and track project and to authorize the finance committee chair or the superintendent to work with the college to develop and execute such a plan, including an amendment to the gift agreement intending to liquidate the gift from the endowment at a suitable point in time.
I will second that.
Jose?
Thanks, Carrie. And thanks to the, to the group for their incredible, you know, work on this. You know, every effort of this, particularly you, Carrie, who's seen this, you've seen this for a number of years now. Just a question for clarification of the previous motion that the committee voted on at our last full committee meeting. As a part of that discussion, I believe, and I just want to make sure I remember this correctly, that the, whatever would be charged to the member towns in terms of interest and the amount paid toward principal to pay off the bond. There was a part of that discussion that, you know, the the return on the million-dollar investment could help cover those costs. So at the end, there would be no, potentially no real costs to our member towns. I think you said that there needed to be some, either, folks needed to look into that, whether that was possible. Is that? I could be misremembering this. If I'm not, was that looked into as a possibility for a way forward?
So I think a number of these possibilities were looked into and discussed with members of town finance committees. And this was the recommendation that they came to us with at, at the, after all of those discussions had taken place. And Joe, you can, you know, chime in with any specifics, but I know that we did discuss, you know, what would it look like to do this plan and what would it look like to do this plan? And would it make more sense to, you know, you know, use the gift to support the borrowing and all of those kinds of things? And when it came right down to it, they were like, just spend the gift. Spend the gift and then come to the towns with what you need in the end, and of course, fundraise. And thank you for, thank you, Julia, for, for bringing that up. And as you know, we do have the $100,000 from the Community Preservation Fund in Williamstown, which has been, you know, which will be applied against that $800,000 borrowing. And there will be other, you know, we will, we will continue the work to set up a 501(c)(3) that can receive donations on behalf of this project. And so there, there are other things in the works that will help to offset this borrowing to the towns. And I think the, the main point and the main message we were getting is use the money that you have and borrow as little as you need. Does that answer your question, Jose?
It does. Yeah, I had a second, but I'm happy to wait so that others can, can get their question in.
Steve?
Just to refresh my memory, the Williams College gift was $5 million, and we've currently spent about 4.9 million and have about 3.5 million left.
So the 3.5 million was at the end of December 2022. We don't know the snapshot right now of, you know, the balance in that gift. But yeah, those, those were the numbers that we were working with. And the project itself is the fourth on two. Yep.
Right. It's just worth everybody being, you know, aware that, you know, while the past is no predictor of the future, we've already essentially spent $5 billion from the $5 billion gift and still have 3 million more after on the order of six years. So again, there's going to be less money earning interest now because we've already spent a lot. We have less that's going to be available for growth. But in terms of your long-term cost to the towns, it's riskier to keep the money in the endowment, but it does have the possibility of providing more resources to the town in the future, but also has more cost to the towns upfront right now. So these are just all things to think about as you come to the decision. There are going to be trade-offs.
Yep, thank you, Steve. Jose?
Thanks, Carrie. It's kind of an awkward question because I know it's not the motion that we're considering now, but they do seem interrelated. There's certainly the, the, well, what's on the agenda before us, you know, each of these items kind of certainly are influencing my, my thinking. I was wondering, without going into the details of it, if we could just just briefly explain the process by which a stabilization fund could be generated, so that I could try to articulate what's in my mind with regards to what the stabilization fund means. That it would help me make a better decision about the motion that's before us if I understood better both how the stabilization fund could be generated and then be what would be involved to see this stabilization fund created in the first place. Does that make sense? Is that something that we could discuss? It just feels awkward for me. I'm just being honest. It's hard for me to.
No, 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 that's fine. That's fine. And they are interrelated. So the stabilization fund is something available to regional schools. And it's, you know, it's something that is to help both the district and the member towns plan for long-term expenditures and overall renewal of school buildings. The school committee would need to vote to bring the request to create a stabilization fund to the towns. The towns would need to vote at their town meetings to establish a stabilization fund. And then annually, and Joe, correct me here if I'm wrong, but annually, the district would put in, as part of the apportionment to the towns, funding that would go into the stabilization fund. How the money then gets taken from the stabilization fund, that I'm not as clear about, but Joe, you can jump in there.
Yep, so all of that, spot on. Annually, we have, we would then have the ability to include a line for each of the three schools budgets that says deposit in the stabilization fund. And if that is approved by the school committee, then approved by the member towns, that amount of money would be a part of a capital assessment that goes to the towns. Over the course of that year, they would put that money to that fund. We would deposit the money into the fund and we would keep a subaccount for each of the three schools. And then by votes of the school committee, the district could utilize funds within that stabilization fund for very specific uses. So we couldn't choose to use it for salaries. We couldn't choose to use it for services. We can only use it for capital improvements and, and things like that. So that's very carefully described within the document that I shared, and it's within the Massachusetts general laws. And further, the full accounting of all deposits into the fund and expenditures from the fund needs to be reported, both to all of us, of course, but to our member towns annually. So it's a, it's a tightly controlled and transparent form of a piggy bank that is designed solely for capital improvement. And with our member towns, it would, it would behoove us to work on those long-term capital plans for each of the three buildings, for them to see out in front of them, here's the amount that we'll want to spend in three and five and 10 years, and for us to work jointly with them to figure out when is it appropriate to store money away? So that we save money for those purposes. And when is it appropriate to plan to borrow funds? And that might be a blended look where we say that if a roof is going to cost a million dollars, let's save 500,000 and be prepared to borrow 500,000 in year, whatever it is. So it gives us a tool for a blended approach to that type of work, whereas right now, we don't really have any form of quote-unquote piggy bank that is available to us for that purpose with our towns. So really borrowing or the Williams College gift was the only tool that we had, at least for Mount Greylock Regional School.
We will still have the Williamstown Elementary School Fund, which helps to pay for capital expenses at that particular school building as well. Other questions?
If I could, Carrie, just to make sure, just from what I was, what Joe just provided us, I mean, this, from my perspective, I think just to, just to voice it, this, this seems like a really positive, potentially positive solution for all three schools, because as we stand, you know, or as it stands, you know, the gift to the middle school, high school is, can only be used for capital expenses at the middle school, high school. You know, Williamstown Elementary has, like you mentioned, Carrie, its fund, and this would provide hopefully a fund, well, if it all pans out this way, a fund support for the borough elementary school as well. So it gives us something that we didn't have before. There are questions about the stabilization fund motion when we get there, but I think this is, this is really positive.
Great, thank you, Jose. Other questions just on this particular motion? Does anybody need me to repeat the motion or we're ready to vote? Does anybody need me to repeat the motion or we're ready to vote? Okay, so again, this is the motion to use to spend the full remainder of the capital gift. Right, Christina, did you want to call a vote or do you want me to?
You can.
All right, so all in favor, roll call?
Oh, and I.
Henry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, bye, I.
Green, I.
Miller, no.
All right, thank you. That motion passes five to one?
Yes.
Okay. The next motion is regarding the borrowing. So this would be again up to $800,000. I'll go ahead and read the motion and then we can have discussion. So the motion is for the Mount Greylock Regional School District to hereby appropriate up to the amount of $800,000. For the purpose of completing the field and track project at Mount Greylock Regional School. Pursuant to chapter 71, section 16D. Of the general laws and the district agreement as amended or pursuant to any other enabling authority.
I will second that.
All right, thank you, Christina. Discussion on the motion to borrow. And again, this goes to both towns at our town meeting and has to pass. Is it a simple majority? Or two thirds majority?
I believe it's a simple majority for this because it's it's not a prop two and a half override type question. And it is, the other thing is it technically for for us technically. Once this goes through, we need to notify our two town halls. And then they have 60 days to. Coordinate either a way to say no or to allow it to pass. So so if if for some reason they chose to not vote it at all. It would by default be approved. That that's how this portion of the MGL works. But our, in doing it right now, the intent is to give the towns an opportunity to discuss it at finance committees select board. And then and then use their annual town meetings as opposed to needing to scramble to. Develop special town meetings.
Carrie, does it make sense to discuss? The points in Joe's notes about the split between the two towns and what that would look like?
Yeah, so. The, so what we're looking at is a 15 year borrowing. And Joe has been working with Unibank, which is our bond counsel to determine, you know. What this would look like in practical terms. The, in terms of the assessment assessments to the towns. The plan on borrowing the 800,000 and assessing 120,000 each year for 10 years. Which averages 80,000 per year in principal and 40,000 in interest. With the way that capital cost sharing between the two towns currently is split. In our regional agreement, 31% is going to Lanesboro, 69% to Williamstown. We'd be looking at 37,000 per year for Lanesboro and 83,000 per year for Williamstown. Over the course of each of 10 years.
Thank you, Carrie. And just to clarify, it's 10 years borrowing, not 15.
Right.
And to add a little bit more color to that, the 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 motion here. Is simply the the authorization to borrow up to $800,000. Exactly how that happens, whether it's over five years, 10 years, 15 years, that is not. A part of that motion, it would actually be up to the school district to navigate the specifics of how the money is borrowed. The the illustrative case of borrowing $800,000 over. And paying it back over the course of 10 years is kind of a baseline. Simple to both calculate and execute type model. And and so that's how we we come up with those with those assessments, annual assessments for 10 years. It's entirely likely that we could borrow the initial $800,000. And in a couple of years, when some of our long term debt associated with. The larger Mount Greylock Regional School Building Project becomes callable. Which just means we we've got a chance to refinance. We've got a chance to to do something if the market is favorable. It's entirely possible that in a few years we could take a look at that and say, we should just fold the remainder of what's left. Five, six hundred thousand dollars worth of principal into that larger bit of borrowing. With lower interest rates over a longer period of time and decrease the annual assessments to the member towns as a result. But all of that would be done through conversations, kind of like we've we've had all along regarding the building project borrowing. Conversations with the towns in terms of what's best for them as we look at capital assessments over the years. So. Just want to make sure people fully understand that they had under update $100,000 in borrowing. Exactly how that's done is we'll we'll optimize that for the two member towns as we go. But we just wanted to get one kind of straightforward. Here's what our bond council has said is a fairly reliable projection to have and to use. So that people can understand what it means financially to to do something like this.
Other questions on this motion? All right, seeing none, hearing none. A vote to, just bring it back up. Authorize the appropriation of the $800,000 for the project, sending it to the towns. All in favor?
Oh, and I.
Henry, I.
Can you hear me? I said, I.
Yes, it's first for a moment.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, bye, I.
Green, I.
Miller, I.
All right, thank you. That passes unanimously. And I think that brings us, where are we in the finance committee? No, we're still in track and field. Okay, so we've done the overall financing, the college gift and the request to borrow. So that's it for the field and track funding portion of the meeting. Do you want to move right into finance?
Go for it, Carrie.
Cool, all right. So if you don't mind, let's move B up. To the the first item, so establishment of a stabilization fund, which we've already talked about. We can go ahead and. Move that. And then talk about it further, so.
I'll second.
Let me read the motion first. Create a stabilization fund per MGL. C 71, S 16, G one half. With separate accounting and assessment. Per our regional agreements language related to apportionment of capital costs. The creation of the stabilization fund will be subject to the approval of a majority. Of the local appropriating authorities of our member municipalities. Still second it, Curtis?
I still second it.
Excellent, all right. More discussion on the stabilization fund. Jose, you said you had might have a few other questions?
Thanks, Carrie. I just just reading through the text, I think the question that I had originally. Might be, the answer to it might be in the in the text that was provided to us, but I'll I'll just. Just say it out loud. In the. Development, I guess you'd call it, I think the term is, I'm already losing the term, but this is called. The aggregate amount of the fund. It sounds like for local considerations. A part of this motion, if it is approved by the full committee, would. Create three separate accounts, assuming this is these are then, this is then, you know, supported by our our member towns. Three separate accounts by which funds can be used to support our three different schools. Could someone walk me through practically how this could play out on a year by year basis? In my mind, you know, imagining scenarios where one member town may not approve. Allocating funds to a stabilization fund. Whether it be to their respective. Elementary school and or to the regional school and and what were the consequences of that in terms of? Year by year, how both this. Aggregate fund or aggregate amount can be developed. And then how it can be used to support our our three school buildings.
Go ahead, Joe.
So. First off, the. Appropriations that are intended to go into the stabilization fund would be a part. Or they they would be components of our annual school budget, which is a single item. At our member towns, town meetings, so it's an omnibus. You you either vote the budget up or you vote it down. And in doing so, for the member towns, if if one were to vote it down, that. Message would would come back to us as a school district and we would choose to either amend our budget somehow and send it back. Or. Well, we we would amend our budget and send it back somehow, or or we would. Try to present the budget in a different way and and hope that it gets passed the the second time. So that's that's where the line for stabilization fund would would live. Or where the lines, three lines, because of the way apportionment works for capital costs within the regional agreement. And and it's consistent with the way most regional agreements in the state work as far as when you've got elementary schools that are local to. Local to towns, because the towns are still fiscally responsible for their elementary schools. But the shared middle and high school or high school. Ends up being subject to the a more complicated formula of how to apportion those costs. So ultimately, any budget either gets passed or doesn't get passed. I think that. Any line in our budget annually could produce disagreements between. Some members of a town in the school district or some members of one town and members of another town. This is no different, but at the same time, I actually feel like a line for the stabilization fund. For each school would be a part and parcel of a long term capital plan. That would really be jointly developed between us and the towns, so it's actually less likely in my mind by the time. A number makes it into those lines, it's less likely that that line would be a concern than others. But we haven't done this before, so I I I don't want to be guilty of hubris. You know, down the line, but I I I guess I feel like that might not be the thing that. That hurts a budget in a given year, most likely.
Julia?
A follow up to that, and thank you, Jose, for raising that. I hadn't thought it through that far. So I really appreciate that. The follow up to that is if there were a year where. One of our towns felt like with all the capital projects they were funding, they just couldn't imagine contributing to the stabilization. Stabilization fund for their elementary school, like that would come out in, I just want to like play this out in my mind, that would come out. In the conversations around budgeting and and so they they still would have the joint, like the middle high school. But they but in our budget, we may have nothing to add to like a Williamstown stabilization fund. Is that right? Like towns could potentially pull that way? Is that right?
They they could advocate that way, yes.
Right, sorry, they could advocate that way, right.
Joe, I I have a question around our lease agreements with the towns. Technically, the towns own the buildings and we lease them for some nominal fee. And we're responsible for repairs and. Replacements up to a certain amount and the towns are responsible beyond that. Is this, is the stabilization fund to be used for the amounts that the towns are responsible for? Since the towns are putting the funding in or could it be used for our portions of? Of those as well?
So ultimately. The money that goes to these buildings is largely coming from our towns anyway. I I think the 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 clause within the lease and I don't have it right in front of me right now, but the clause within the elementary school leases. Reads something to the effect of if in a given year, there's a, there's a. There's a maintenance expense that is below $5,000. The expectation is that we will just take care of that without any further conversation. If it's above $5,000, that triggers a conversation with the town where we say, guess what? We we have a capital cost that that is really the. The. The responsibility of the town, not the school district. So we should talk about assessing additional funds so that that can be paid for. Now, a stabilization fund, though, because its express purpose is to cover capital costs. The 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 conversation with the town would be, we have. If we have funds in the stabilization fund associated with that school, we can go to those funds first. Which would have been the case, for instance, this year with the Lanesboro Elementary School boilers. Or if we're saving up for a roof and if the town would prefer to cover that cost in a different way. Using other funds, that would certainly be be a part of the conversation. I think I answered the question, but I.
Yeah, no, I I think that that's that's right. And I think, you know, it highlights again the. The value of having these conversations with our member towns on a. On a regular basis, not just annual, but on a regular basis, and we have those open lines of communication now. And we, you know, our our member towns are well aware of their obligations to help. Preserve these buildings as assets to the towns. And I think, you know, this is in a sense a partnership. In how best to move forward in doing that. Jose, did you still have a question?
Yeah, just to just to follow up, thanks, Carrie. The just just curious after your question, Carrie. Maybe the question is, is why wouldn't we just establish a stabilization fund for the regional school? And leave the elementary schools, you know, as our lease agreement. Apparently states, you know, to to our member towns to support when and if needed. You know, on a presumably a case by case basis. Why, why, you know, I'm just curious about why didn't we stop there? As opposed to the motion that we have before us, which is to create three effectively three stabilization funds. This seems just a little bit different from. Yeah, just curious.
So per per the regional agreement and and the general laws of the state. This, the the management of the stabilization fund, if it's created, there would be one fund. But it needs to be managed in a way that. Stays consistent with the capital apportionment. Approach that is built into the regional agreement. So by default. And just by following the structure that that's already in place. There there need to be the three separate. Bits of accounting because of the way capital apportionment works within the regional agreement. That said, if if one town over the years says, no, no, we we don't want. To deposit any money in, we we know that you're telling us that $25,000 we need to go to exterior doors. $575,000 we need to go to boilers and a million dollars we'll need to go to the roof. But we're going to cover that in other ways. That would be within the rights of the of the town to say that that's our preference. We we'd rather not. Appropriate money annually to put into a fund for our elementary schools, say. And we'd rather borrow all of that when the time comes. But but it would make it a part of the conversation, the 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 bigger conversation about. How do we as a school district and they as towns best manage both our buildings and our finances?
And and that is, in fact, what has happened in the past is we've asked the towns. I couldn't find the dates, but we've asked the towns for uh stabilization funds and. One member town has in the past said. We don't want to do this. Just come to us when you need money um or when when something happens and. That's a sort of a reactive way of addressing a problem, right? And so now what we're trying to do with both of our member towns is to be more proactive and. To um have fun set aside for when things that are either expected or unexpected uh come down the pike um so that we can all plan. In ways that are beneficial, both to the town budgets and to the district budget. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, just just I I think I think folks will be curious about, and I I think I think it's all. Embedded in the language of the of the text that was shared in terms of how the appropriation happens. You know, for folks who may be curious about whether, you know, Lanesboro tax dollars could go to supporting. Capital. Projects at Williamson Elementary. That that's not possible with the way the way this is written up. Got it.
Other questions? And thi- this may be something that we need to speak to on the floor of town meetings um just to make sure that folks know. Um, and we'll we'll do our best to be clear prior to town meetings about, you know, what it is we're asking and why. And having the support of the town finance committees will be very helpful. All right, um. Ready to vote? All right, so this is on the stabilization fund, bringing um the creation of the stabilization fund to our towns. All in favor?
Owen, I.
Conry, I.
Constance, you know.
Elfin, by nine.
Green eye.
Miller, I.
Great. That motion passes unanimously. Um, thank you. So I think we have one more vote to take, which is. On the biweekly warrant review process after March thirty first. So. Rumor is, it's not a rumor. Um. So the MASC has given us a heads up that. The House has appropriated funding to um. Extend the remote meeting option through twenty twenty five. The Senate now needs to take it up. This is within the state of Massachusetts. It. It looks likely that we'll be able to continue to meet remotely. Um. But in the event that we can't, and even. If we can, um, we're. Working to clean. Clean up our process um for. How it is we approve or in articles. And with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Joe because he's been doing the work on this.
Sure. So um. If we go back ten years, the the Massachusetts general laws used to state. That a regional school districts committee. Could uh designate a subcommittee of no less than three people. To uh review and sign payable and payroll warrants. Um. That changed over the last four or five years. So that now the Massachusetts, the Massachusetts general laws state, the regional school committee may designate any one of its members for the purpose of signing payroll warrants and accounts payable warrants to allow for the re- release of checks. Provided, however, that the member shall make available to the board at its next meeting a record of such actions. So uh i- in in a. In a quest to. Try to follow where the general laws are headed. But also um. Follow, I think, where where this committee's sentiments probably are. The recommendation, and and this now kind of skips down past our current policy because we would need to then think about revising our current policy if this was the will of the committee. It it makes sense to me that we would put forward a process of designating the chair of the finance subcommittee. For the purpose of signing payroll warrants and accounts payable warrants to allow for the release of checks. So there's there's that one signature by. The chair of a specific subcommittee within the full school committee. To, that's part one. Part two is to include review of of. The recent warrants as a part of regular meetings, which I think. For the finance subcommittee ideally would be monthly, um especially if we're in person monthly, perhaps right before the the full school committee meeting, but. Embedding that much into policy feels feels like it would be too much. But to include review of recent warrants as a part of regular meetings of the finance subcommittee. So the the subcommittee of three people would be tasked with. Making sure that they, as a part of a packet, have reviewed warrants, and if they have questions. They could ask those questions um during those meetings. Um. And then also ensure the availability of all warrants to all school committee members for timely review. And records of warrant related actions. So. It it would it would be codifying that the full school committee could have digital access so that every time checks are going out. That the full school committee would have the ability to say, you know, I I I heard that they just purchased a. Seventy five thousand dollar. Something or other. I I'd like to go and figure out more. Um. That would be ready access for all seven school committee members to be able to to see and then ask questions during during a following school committee meeting. Um. Or to just ask questions of the administration or the the finance subcommittee chair um immediately. Um. So this kind of tiered. Approach to payment procedures feels like it's a a good path forward. It it would require a revision to. Um, the policy that I embedded within that memo policy DK regional school district payment procedures. Um. But that's something that we could get done over the course of the next few meetings to to be able to.
And it's worth adding, I think, thanks, Joe. It's worth adding that um two of these three things we do now as part of our practice, right? So the finance subcommittee has been reviewing all payroll and accounts payable warrant articles. Uh, every two weeks uh when we meet. Uh, we were talking about the possibility of. Uh, reducing our meetings to once a month rather than every two weeks with the advent of in person meeting. We may do that anyway. Um, but we would have the uh potentially have the warrant articles available for review still every two weeks. We would, w- right now, we do currently have one person signing, and that is the chair of the finance subcommittee, and. That has been our practice since, I believe, twenty twenty, um, which is in line with. Uh, master general law, but is not in line with our policy. So the goal is to. Um, eventually, maybe. At the next policy meeting, folks could take it up, but eventually bring our policy into line with our practice and bring our practice in line. With MGL, which also states that we should be doing this third thing, which is sharing all the warrant articles with all the school committee members, because we are all the fiscal agents of the district. So um. Steve?
Thank you. Uh, just two items. I know long, long ago, we used to have at least one person from each town having to sign things, and I believe we no longer need that. I just wanted to confirm that that is correct.
Yeah, it's not in our regional agreement.
That's right. That's what I thought. And then the second thing is, I'm always worried when only one person is designated to have the authority to do something in case something happens to them or that position becomes vacant. So what I would suggest is we designate. The chair of the finance committee to do this, and then if they are unavailable. Then this can be done by, perhaps it's the vice chair of the finance subcommittee, or it's the chair of the school committee. We just don't want to be in a position where if something has to be done timely and one person is inaccessible, then there's no way to do it.
Our legal counsel advised us to follow the the strict. Letter of the MGL in designating one person. And our legal counsel said that for extenuating circumstances like that, like if someone's incapacitated or away on vacation for six weeks. Um, that that could be something that is handled as an exception where um. We would try to recognize it ahead of time and and do something during a school committee meeting or or um. Or just uh. For one round of warrants delay signing um by a week or two. Um. So that's something that that I did ask our counsel and and they recommended that we go forward with the language that I have here rather than. Try to designate an alternate, which which would have been my. My favorite practical path, but sometimes the general laws are not practical. They are um. Something else.
No, I I I understand that. I've just been in many situations over the years where it has been extremely valuable to have someone who has the authority to act quickly. And so. I I I would feel more comfortable if you had. You know, the, you know, chair of the school committee designated as an alternate if the chair of the finance committee is not available.
Yeah, I mean, one thing I really like about. The process that we have now is that. We we as the finance subcommittee, which um. Is composed of three members and does have representation from both member towns. Has the ability um to review these warrant articles every week. Or every two weeks, sorry, um every two weeks, and it's um. You know, that that is. To me more important than the signature. I know the signature is important for documentation. But it's the fact that they're being looked at, right, that they're being reviewed um on a regular basis. And. I wouldn't want to lose that necessarily. I think it's a valuable process to have. Um. Although if we move it to once a month, I think that's fine as well. I just wouldn't want to completely take it away from the finance subcommittee, that responsibility of reviewing, even though it's being extended to the full school committee. I think having a subcommittee of folks who know it's part of their job on a regular basis to do this um is an important. Aspect of serving on that subcommittee. Steve, did you have another question?
Yes, I'm just building on that, especially if we're able to keep Zoom meetings. I strongly agree with the value of having the subcommittee reviewing. If you have to drive all the way, especially with people traveling and whatnot, this can be hard to do, but doing finance committees like this by Zoom. It's a good way to keep informed and just as you do this, you get a better sense of what the budget is and what the budget is doing. And I I think it makes me have a much better appreciation for the challenges of the district.
Yeah. So there's a vote on the agenda, but I'm not sure what the vote. Is um or whether we actually need a vote um.
Joe. It may be Carrie just there in case there was.
Okay.
In a request or a need for a vote.
So I think the need is perhaps to send this to the policy subcommittee um so that our policy is up to date with both MGL and and our practice and that our practice is in turn in line with. Both our policy and and general law.
Can um, does this count as the informational? Round. Or policy adoption?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know. Um.
I don't think so.
I don't think so because we don't have an explicit statement here for people to look at. And again, I would strongly urge the policy subcommittee to think about having a second person designated. I understand. That this may not be what the standard practice is. But we've been in situations in the past two years where unexpected things happen and we have to move quickly. And I know it was very valuable that the superintendent had the ability to quickly act. And you change school policy as needed at a few points at key junctures. And while I hope that this is not going to be used and with good planning, it shouldn't happen. I I just think it's much more. I I just think it's just. Safer to have a second person, if possible, who can sign things if needed.
Taken under advisement. Thank you, Steve. All right, um. So if that's it on this item, we can move on to FY twenty four budget preview.
Would you like me to take it from from there?
For you to take it from there.
All right. Let me get screen shared. Oh, boy. All right, can everybody see this cover sheet right now? Great. So um, we're going to take this preview in three parts. Um. One part is revenue, so funds coming in to cover expenses. Second part is uh apportionment, which is the the fancy term that we've been saying a bunch tonight for how costs uh at the middle high school. Are apportioned between our two member towns. Um. And then the third part will be expenditures, the the money that. We're trying to plan to go out the door in FY twenty four. Um. So looking at the first part, revenue. The primary, the the big chunks of of funding that we use to operate our school district, um not necessarily in order of size. Um, but they are chapter seventy and seventy one, so that's the the state's mainline funding for education. Grants, which are um primarily state and federal funding sources, um tuition and school choice, which are based on revolving accounts. Um, that we have with funds coming in and going out. Um, excess and deficiency and transportation revolving. Um. And I'll talk about transportation revolving in a little bit more detail in a second, but um excess and deficiency and transportation revolving are funds where. Um, if in a given year, we don't need to utilize fully the funding that we have on hand. Um, through the general fund, which would be chapter seventy and seventy one and our towns funding. Um. We're able to close that funding. Um, to the excess and deficiency or the transportation revolving fund so that we can use them in subsequent years. Um. And there are a variety of of uh limitations and constructs for for how those funds can be deposited and how they can be used. Um. And then our towns, our our towns are our largest. Sources of funding annually. Um. And. Now to get into that in a little bit of detail for FY twenty four. First. Talking about chapter seventy and seventy one, um, which are and and unfortunately, our apportionment sheets are. Our sheets don't necessarily go in the same order that I just used, but I will highlight here the four point eight five, seven million and the five hundred and eighty two thousand dollar lines for FY twenty four. That are here in the sheet. Um. Those represent the single largest increases in state funding for education that we have, I believe, ever seen. Um. So the the governor's budget, the first bit that just came out um about a week ago. Demonstrate a a really enormous, wonderful commitment to funding education at the state level. Um, in ways that that we have never seen before. Um. So sizable increases, um nine hundred and forty three thousand, four hundred and ninety two. Um, worth of increase in chapter seventy, one hundred and fifty four, nine oh one in terms of chapter seventy one, um sizable increases from the state. Then if we move to. What was I saying before? Grants. Grant funding, we're we're showing a three hundred and fifty five thousand dollar decrease. In the funding that we are going to be using in FY twenty four versus what we're using in FY twenty three. That is. Solely due to the expiration of COVID era relief funds um that will not be. Coming down in FY twenty four and and beyond. Um. So this is a significant adjustment from um the last couple of years. Aside from COVID relief funds, all of the rest of our federal and state grants are projected to hold steady and and I think. Holds steady for for years to come or perhaps slightly increase in in years to come. So right now, this. Uh, six hundred and fifty thousand dollar chunk that we're looking at for FY twenty four is a fairly sustainable. Path for looking at what grant funding can and will be. After grants, tuition, school choice, uh, the top two lines up here. Um, we are showing a decrease in the amount of tuition and school choice funding that we will be. We are showing a decrease in the amount of tuition and school choice funding that we will be using in FY twenty four versus FY twenty three. For a few reasons. First off. We have with with full disclosure to ourselves and to our towns, we've been spending more than we've been bringing in. To those funds that that has been our plan. That's what we have done. So we've been decreasing the balances in those accounts. And that's part one. Part two is. With respect to tuition, we are seeing a. A slight decline in the number of tuition students that we have so that the revenue coming into those accounts. Is decreasing faster than just the the tuition rate increases times the number of students. So we we need to keep an eye on revenue overall decreasing into at least our tuition account. Choice, we've we've bounced back up a bit to pre-COVID. School choice numbers, but the numbers that you see here, the eight hundred thousand and the five hundred thousand. Eight hundred thousand spending about fifty thousand dollars more than we're projecting to bring in. The five hundred thousand is spending. Twenty five, thirty, forty thousand dollars less than we're projected to ring in. So we're kind of gliding there in a way that's. Decreasing those funds, but not nearly as quickly as as we have over the last couple of years. All of that is then. I'm just making sure I don't drop a point E and D and transportation revolving. All of that is then counterbalanced, or not all of that, but some of that is counterbalanced by. The possible use of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of E and D. And the the definite use of one hundred and sixty five thousand seven hundred and seventy one dollars worth of transportation revolving funds. Now, those two funds, if if we think of them in in concert, we have made a concerted effort to. Max out our excess and deficiency account. Over the last couple of years to ensure that we get the best long-term borrowing rates that we can. Because financial strength with regional school districts is for better or worse measured. At least in part by. How close you are to having a maximal excess and deficiency account on hand, five percent of our net operating. We have done that. That 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 number, that maximum number is certified. We've actually. Been able to oversave into that a little bit, which is why there's overflow into the transportation revolving account, which we're actually going to talk about in more detail. In in a couple of weeks during the special budget meeting. But the 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 net is that now rather than spending. Tuition and choice. In a way that's very aggressive. It behooves us to, if we need to. Spend down in FY twenty four, a portion of that excess and deficiency and to spend transportation revolving funds. So these are funds that are kind of balancing out the the decrease in tuition and choice. That we're going to be committing. Now, all of this, the the end result is that if you look at. All of the highlighted and just the the bold lines that we have there. The amount of money that we are using to offset. The appropriations, the the amount that we need to appropriate from our member towns in order to. Run our school district for a year. All of that revenue is increasing by three quarters of a million dollars, seven hundred and fifty four thousand two hundred and thirty nine is the. Is the number that's printed here. So all of that is wonderful. That that means that we could spend seven hundred and fifty four thousand two hundred and thirty nine dollars more than we are in FY twenty three. And be able to bring in a zero percent type. Increase to our member towns. Now. While we're on the topic of member towns, town officials have requested that we try to stay. Within bounds that are no more than three percent increases for each of them. Those are, those are messages that we've heard from our town administrators and our town finance committee members. So if you look at those two in combination. If we were to utilize. Fully that three percent suggested maximum increase and the seven hundred and fifty four thousand dollars. We're looking at right around one point three million dollars in quote unquote acceptable cost increases if i- if we need them. So that's the number to keep in the back of your mind. As we move on to expenditures later, which I'm going to leave for for the end because they'll probably trigger the most discussion. Are there any questions on the? On the descriptions that have been given here, that the structures that are in place?
Joe, I don't think we've approved the regional transportation revolving fund yet. So. That's. Why you mentioned we'll bring it up at the at the budget meeting, but. You're able to put money into it and take money out of it before the school committee has officially approved using it.
Th- th- this is not, this is not an official, but this is a very draft budget here. So this is certainly not approved by the school committee. And it's not even ready for approval by the school committee as as you will see in a second. So that this is, this is a proposal. These numbers, even though it's on a fancy spreadsheet, it is, it is only a draft. Of a proposal as opposed to being a final of an approved.
Right, so all all for purposes of discussion.
Yes, yeah, all of this is. All of this except for, I mean, and and chapter seventy and chapter seventy one, those numbers that are printed here. Those are also just the the governor's first. Numbers out, that's still subject to the House, the Senate. And and plenty of additional additional work at the state level before those numbers are finalized as well. So, yeah, I I I should always, every slide here, I should lead with. Very draft, certainly not official. For sure. Are there any other questions on this before I click past this slide? All right. So next apportionment, how we apportion middle high school costs between our two member towns. And and this slide is mostly about trends right now. Our apportionment of operating costs happen in. One way, our apportionment of capital costs for Mount Greylock Regional School happen in happen in a different way. All of this is embedded within the regional agreement as far as how how this works. For FY twenty and and on the operating side, apportionment of those costs. Is calculated by looking at the five-year trailing average. Of the shared enrollments or the or the contributed enrollments by our two member towns. And if you look at twenty twenty two into twenty twenty three, you'll see that Williamstown's enrollment. At Mount Greylock Regional School has increased by twenty seven students. That was as of. October first of twenty twenty two, which is how we get our twenty twenty three number. And Lanesboro's. Student population at Mount Greylock has declined slightly from one hundred and forty six to one hundred and forty three students. So what that means is that the. That means that the operating costs. All other things equal. Between the two member towns will shift slightly towards the town of Williamstown and away from the town of Lanesboro. So. Last year, sixty six point eight two percent of operating costs from Mount Greylock Regional School. Were assessed to the town of Williamstown. This year. It will be sixty seven point three eight percent. So that's, that's just that slight shift from one town to the other based on student enrollment. If we look at capital costs. That formula is a a bit more complex and that in addition to the five-year trailing average of enrollment. It also utilizes the equalized valuations, which is a state construct for. Trying to to have a proxy for the wealth of a town by looking at the. The cumulative. Property values within that town. We did receive new equalized valuation numbers to use. This year. EQVs are are published every two years, so the state doesn't update them every year. They update them every two years. And so the the new numbers. Pushed. Actually slightly in. The direction of Lanesboro's property values increasing. A bit more than. Williamstown's property values increased. So when you combine the enrollment ratio and the EQV ratio, you then get the capital split, which has. Because of the enrollment ratio changed, shifted slightly in the direction of Williamstown as well. So the enrollment ratio kind of outweighed. The EQV ratio there in terms of impact. So. All of this is to say that when we do end up with final numbers for Mount Greylock Regional School for both operating and capital. These percentages that are highlighted are how those costs are then split between the two member towns. Are there any questions on that? And I apologize that this is such a terrible monologue of. Data. All right, so now what everybody's really here for, which is the expenditures. And and this is where we get into, this is draft, draft, draft. Very draft. Because. This is the first year in my experience as someone within this school district. That pretty much everything that we look at. Wants to increase and and the the question is how much can we contain those increases? So that we're able to live within within those means that we provided. In the first couple of slides on on revenue. So how how can we keep ourselves within? That one point three or so million dollars increased. On non-staff expenditures, this is everything outside of payroll. Currently, we're looking at about seven hundred thousand dollars as an increase. From FY twenty three to FY twenty four, health insurance is three hundred and twenty five thousand of that, increasing nine percent between. This this year and next year, and also we're seeing a larger percentage of our employees. Taking our health insurance versus getting health insurance from some other, from some other place. So we're we're being. You're seeing the results here of both of those factors increasing our costs. Transportation, some of this is contractual, some is based on fuel prices. Projected versus where they were back when we originally signed our transportation, our current transportation contract. And some are based on. Some of that transportation cost increase is based on the our expectations for out of district. Transportation that we need to provide to students who need that kind of transportation. Berkshire County Retirement System. Which is the municipal retire retirement system that serves. Many of our staff members. It assesses us every year. Based on the contribution requirement that it needs in order to continue paying out. Its members' retirement. So this is above and beyond separate from. The percentages that come out of employees' paychecks to go into their retirement account. So that this is our. Paying into the system as an employer. The ninety thousand dollar increase here, although it's the smallest that we've seen in the last few years. It's still a a sizable number. And we do see the light at the end of the tunnel there in conversations with Berkshire County Retirement, based on all of the data that goes into. The calculations annually, they are thinking that we're going to see. Either no increase or perhaps even a slight decrease going into next year, but that's a conversation that the finance subcommittee has. Has had in some detail and will continue to have as we look at FY twenty five. Utilities, that is electricity, propane, natural gas, oil. And telephone. Collectively, we're looking at a seventy five thousand dollar increase there. We have needed to rebid our electricity contracts. In the way that many municipalities have, and we, I think, fared better than than many. In that our, just as an example, our electricity costs went from nine cents per kilowatt. Over the last few years up to thirteen cents per kilowatt for the next two years. So we 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 bid it as a as a shorter term contract. Rather than a three or a five year to try to try to be within this window of time where. Electricity costs more for a shorter period of time if possible. So we we mitigated that as much as we could. We've seen other school districts and towns reporting. Prices that look more like fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen cents per kilowatt. So. We feel like we did pretty well, but it's still not a not a pretty number to have within budget increases. Textbooks and classroom supplies. This is. Not due to new curriculum that we're trying to put in place. Some of it is. Our curriculum materials that we need to annually replace. Some are areas where we need to. Replace materials that have gone out of date, but they're a part of the same, the same packages, the same things that we're already doing. And then some in the case of classroom supplies, just everything seems to have gone up five, six, ten percent. In terms of costs that we're seeing per unit. That's textroom, textbook and classroom supplies, forty three thousand dollars. Out of district tuition. We've, we've seen a mid-year significant increase in out of district tuition. That we've needed to manage this year and we're projecting that that's going to continue into next year. We've had a number of different efforts underway to try to try to figure out how to how to help that. But right now, we're projecting about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in out of district tuition. That we will need to be able to fund for next year. And then maintenance and required technology updates, this is a bundled package of. Within maintenance for two elementary schools, in particular, we have a number of areas that that we need to continue to. Invest smaller sums of money on a on a per area basis to keep our buildings. Moving ahead and staying on top of things and within required technology updates. Within our accounting system or student information system and some others. We've had some some areas where we need to commit to updates, upgrades. And improvements to to keep all those systems running as they as they need to. So that these are not. These are not areas of optional or trying to expand our capabilities. These are areas where we're really, we need to commit to them in order to move ahead. Appropriately into next year. So all of that together. Adds up to more than seven hundred thousand dollars. But we do have a decrease in a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in borrowing costs. As we move from short to long-term borrowing. Within Mount Greylock Regional School Building Project. So we will, we will have a line in our budget. That had been two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for this year related to short-term borrowing to bridge the gap between. The closeout or the the end of the building project and the final check from the MSBA. That short-term borrowing will go away and and there's a smaller amount of long-term borrowing. That we will be executing and that's a net decrease of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars between. This year and next year. So that's the non-staff side, the non-payroll side. Are there questions on that? Right now? All right. Now payroll. And within payroll here, we are talking about. Really a a level staffing approach with a couple of exceptions. That 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 we'll get into and we're looking at. As of right now, and this is again where we say draft, 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 because we we know that we need to figure out how to. Further reduce our overall expenditures, but we're looking at a million dollar increase. Hundred and eighty thousand of that is an increase in what will be our long-term and short-term substitute teaching lines. This year, we've seen. An extraordinary increase in. Substitute teaching needed as a result of short and long-term. Short and long-term absence by by our staff in a variety of positions. Some of that wonderful, some of that, some of that not wonderful in terms of the 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 reasons for those absences. But as we look towards FY twenty four, we know that we need to budget. More within those short and long-term lines across each of our three schools. In order to know that we'll be able to live within the budget that we're putting forward, not, I shouldn't say no, but in order to. Do all that we can, knowing what we know right now in FY twenty three at this point. um do all that we can, knowing what we know right now in FY twenty-three at this point. For FY twenty-four. So currently, we're budgeting a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in increases in substitute teaching needs. Um, we have about an eight hundred thousand dollar increase projected right now for our instructional staff, our teachers and our paraprofessionals. Um, that's based on our um contractual obligations um across all of those different different units and and staff members. Um, and a hundred thousand dollar increase in academic co-curricular and um coaches supplemental pay, supplemental pay being another word for things like stipends, overtime, um time committed to uh projects that are in place that that need to get done with respect to curriculum work um and so on. So in sum, that's about a six percent overall increase in instructional staff payroll that we're currently projecting with with level staffing. Um. And all of that um net um is is larger than a million dollars. Um, we do have some other areas of payroll that are increasing as well, but but we we are noting tonight and we'll be talking about it in more detail later during the superintendent's um update that uh we are projecting a two hundred and thirty thousand dollar decrease in district office staff costs. Um, these are not um, these are not staff who would be leaving us. These are three positions that are currently not filled, namely um positions that were budgeted for in FY twenty-three of um the DEIB director, the director of facilities and um office staff um that we've had throughout COVID within the district office to help manage manage everything that that had happened. Um, so those are three positions that that we're not projecting to fill that are that are not filled right now. But again, all of this is drafted, it's subject to school committee review and approval. Um, and we are working on a variety of ways to try to address the fact that about a million plus seven hundred thousand is four hundred thousand dollars more than the one point three million dollars that we can um comfortably put forward uh as a budget for approval on March thirtieth. So between now, March ninth, March thirtieth, we've got plenty more work to do is is what I'm what I'm trying to say at the end of this.
And you all have on your um agendas a budget meeting on March twenty-third. Um, which I don't know if that has been confirmed by everyone that folks can attend, but the goal is to go over this budget again. After um more uh administrative review. Thank you, Joe.
Yep.
Think you've silenced the crowd. So we have a four hundred thousand dollar shortfall right now. That's the gap at the moment. Given the draft numbers.
Yeah, yes, and and there are a variety of ways that we're trying to approach decreasing that, um, which range from sharpening pencils, saying, do do we really need this much in this line, or do we think we're actually going to be able to spend less um onto onto other things? So um, we're we're trying to make sure that that we don't leave any rock unturned as we as we get towards that budget um. That we will have ready for final review and approval.
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, I was just gonna join and say thank you, Joe, for, you know, all the hard, you know, difficult work that's being done here. Um, just you're looking at the numbers and some of the choices we are going to need to make. I remember when we had the reports from the school councils, one of the things we were discussing is how can we do that with existing staff to meet the requests that we heard from the community without necessarily bringing in more people. And I think that's something we're going to have to be looking at throughout the district. And so I would just like to, you know, state right now that I would, you know, not support adding more administrative positions at this time. I would actually support keeping some of these positions unfilled for the fiscal year twenty-four, you know, given that with them unfilled right now, that this is where the budget is. Thank you.
Other questions or comments on the cheery topic of FY twenty-four budget? And Julia?
I don't, I don't have a suggestion or an idea, but I just want to name how incredibly disappointed I will be if we can't have a DEI director. And um I'm a little bit concerned that the results of something like the Panorama Survey could very easily lead to types of work that really need somebody like I I don't want to presuppose what the results are going to be, but having seen Courtney Tunis's results. I'm just really concerned about um our students' sense of belonging. Uh, and I I get we have a budget shortfall, and I'm not saying we need to go in deeper, but I just, I can't let this moment pass without saying I'm I'm worried for our students without something like the DEI director position.
Thanks, Julia. Jose?
Yeah, I I, you know, keep it really brief. I just want to second um everything that Julia just shared.
Thank you. All right. Um Christina, wanna?
Yes, so sure. Next up on the agenda is the Policy and Governance Subcommittee Report. And so we will turn it over to Jose.
Thank you, Christina. And I promise, uh, even though we've got several items on the agenda, we're gonna, we're gonna fly through this um breaking records potentially. Uh, we have two uh policy items that um have been listed on the agenda as uh items that the school committee will be asked to vote on. Um, the first up is policy BDE. I think what we'll do is um I think everyone wants to hear Curtis, Curtis's somber voice read this policy uh for us. Um, this will be a second read of policy BDE. Uh, Curtis, would you, would you mind uh?
Happy to, happy to.
Engaging us, thank you.
Uh, policy BDE, subcommittees of the school committee. The school committee shall appoint members to subcommittees at the first school committee meeting following the annual organizational meeting for a period of one year. These subcommittees may be created for a specific purpose and to make recommendations for committee action. One, the subcommittee will be established through action of the committee. Two, the committee chair, subject to approval by the committee, will appoint the subcommittee chair and its members. Three, the committee chair, subject to approval by the committee, will provide the subcommittees with a list of its functions and duties. Four, the subcommittee may make recommendations for committee action, but it may not act for the school committee. Five, all subcommittees of the school committee are subject to the provisions of the open meeting law.
Thank you, Curtis. I want to uh uh highlight that in um item four of this policy, we received feedback from Stephen regarding language um that he recommended that we add. We did add that edit uh to a draft of this policy. And it would read along the lines of the subcommittee may make recommendations for committee action, but it may not act for the school committee unless asked. There's Julie, I can read your notes. Um, unless asked by
So designated?
Designated, thank you, by the full committee to do to do so. Um, I think we need to um, this is not the version of the policy that the Policy and Governance Subcommittee moved to consideration or for consideration by the um for the by the full committee. Uh, Jake, you wouldn't by any chance have a version of this that we could share?
I am feverishly looking, Jose. So give me
Okay, thank you, Jake.
Yep, I I did at least mention that publicly in the meeting last time, so.
Yeah, I think it's come up a a couple of times that the, some of the subcommittees are occasionally designated or delegated um by the full school committee to
That's right. And we we did add that language. Um, it just doesn't appear in this uh edition of the of the policy edits. We'll see if Jake can can bring it up.
You you may want to look at another policy, Jose, while I'm trying to find this.
We'll we'll wait uh to consider the motion on this particular policy, and we'll move on to to policy CBI, Evaluation of the Superintendent, which has gone through uh several iterations, to be honest. Um, though, uh, still important for us to provide a second read for. So Curtis will ask you to indulge us once again.
Sure thing. Policy CBI, Evaluation of the Superintendent, new version. The role of the superintendent is to guide the district in achieving the district's mission, vision, and goals. The super the school committee then works with the superintendent to determine the goals and standards upon which the superintendent will Evaluation can serve the purpose of helping the superintendent continually improve their practice and performance. Through evaluation of the superintendent, the school committee will strive to, one, ensure that the efforts of the superintendent are focused on district goals and that the standards of professional practice established by state regulation are met by the superintendent. Two, ensure that the school committee and superintendent agree on the immediate priorities amongst the superintendent's responsibilities. Three, provide excellence in administrative leadership of the school district. Four, develop a respectful and productive working relationship with the superintendent. To support these efforts, the school committee and superintendent will periodically review a set of performance objectives based on the needs of the school district in keeping with state regulations for the evaluation of the superintendent. The superintendent's performance will be reviewed in accordance with specified goals and standards. The timeline of evaluation and assessment will involve the following. One, annually, by the end of August, the superintendent will provide a self-evaluation report to the school committee. Two, every two years, by the end of September, the school committee will conduct an evaluation of the superintendent based on the self-evaluation report and other pertinent information. Three, following the evaluation, in October, the school committee will present its evaluation of the superintendent at a school committee meeting. Four, twice a year, the superintendent will provide a brief assessment of progress toward goals to the school committee. Five, annually in November, the school committee and superintendent will agree on the superintendent's continuing and or new goals for the school current school year. At a school committee meeting, the superintendent will present these goals with the opportunity for the school committee to suggest amendments. The school committee will then vote to approve the goals. All school committee discussions and deliberation related to the superintendent's performance evaluation shall be conducted in open session in accordance with the open meeting law.
Thank you, Curtis. The uh Policy and Governance Subcommittee unanimously uh moved this addition to the full committee for consideration. Um, we're scheduled to vote on this particular addition. Uh, do we, can anyone or anyone like to second the motion by the Policy and Governance Subcommittee?
I will second the motion.
Thank you, Christina. Christina seconds the motion um discussion. Anyone have comments or questions regarding the addition we see before us? Carrie?
Thanks, Jose. Thanks to the committee for putting this together. Um, so my question is about the every-two-year evaluation. Um and then so point two under the timeline. Um, and then the fact that point three says following the evaluation in October, that I assume would also be every two years. Um, and so I'm wondering I'm wondering why every two years rather than annually, and then it if whether point three needs to have some indication that it is also every two years rather than.
Yeah, that's a good question and a good, a good point regarding, you know, we're just reducing or removing ambiguity around uh point three or when point three is scheduled to occur. Um, I'll ask my uh fellow subcommittee members to uh follow up on what I'm about to say, but the, um, I think the the intention around every two years was to reduce the sense of onerousness of the evaluation process. In providing and given that um annually, the school committee and superintendent are reviewing and assessing goals, you know, existing goals and new goals for the upcoming or current school year. We felt that those those conversations that were happening frequently um annually and and semi-annually uh provided guidance, perspective, feedback to the superintendent um thereby reducing the need for a formal annual evaluation process. Um, Julia and uh and Curtis, do you wanna uh maybe you remember differently or would like to follow up on?
So could I just actually before um others sign in on this, I so would the evaluation that happens every other year be based on the previous two years? Or would it be based on just the previous year?
That's a good question as well. You know, I my um I believe this would be for the previous two years, you know, um assessing the um progress made that the superintendent has made towards the goals that were established over the preceding two years. Is that, is that right, Julia and Curtis, looking to the two of you for?
Well, I think there's two parts to the evaluation. There's one about progress towards goals, and there's one about um uh performance against standards that are tied to the goals. And and Jake, you jump in and tell me, you know, jump in here too. Um, and I think it's hard. So I guess, yes, it would be over the previous two years, but I would also this, this is a great question, because personally, I would say um, it's a bit of a growth mindset, like if something happened a year and a half prior, like that wouldn't really be, but never happened again. Like, I can't imagine that would be part of my evaluation, right? Like something that we did not work well, and he you know, we gave him Jake the feedback and it got better, like that, like, that's part of the process. So it feels like it's more um maybe a point in time as well. Um, I I would and so Jake, I I have another point on this. Let me make my other point, and then Jake, if you want to weigh in. The state evaluation system has for experienced educators, um, they actually suggest moving to a two-year process. Um, and so I think we have an experienced superintendent here um also, so I just wanted to name that.
Yeah, and I I would just jump in and say a lot of our conversations were around the the really two tracks. The first track being that the and I've said it before, probably half a dozen times with with you all, the 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 most valuable feedback is the ongoing feedback that happens weekly, monthly, sometimes daily, you know, from from you all, from our staff, from our other administrators, from from parents and guardians and caretakers and folks in the community. So that's one track that 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 there's like, there's the evaluation that's real and that's meaningful and that makes me step back and reflect. And then there's like the event of evaluation that that is legally required. And I think that's the piece around the that the the ongoing reflective nature of evaluation happens really almost daily. The event extremely time-consuming when compared to the to the actual payback in terms of helping improve. Uh, so I thi- I think that was also a piece, not only to get in line with with how others are are evaluated, but but also just to to recognize that the real value is just having a a solid relationships with with all of the people that I'm here to serve, so they're comfortable being honest with me about their take on on what's going on, how I'm responding to it, and how I'm leading the district.
Thank you, Jake, and thank you, Julia. Uh, you you brought up, you raised two points, uh, Carrie, one of which I don't want to uh have escaped my my mind at the moment. And in this regards to the potential um ambiguity between points two and three, and I was curious to know what you thought of this potential amendment. And I don't, I think we need to see probably this on the screen. I don't know if we have a Google. I guess, can you share this uh Jake on your end? So we could see this together, the Google Doc version of this um.
Yep, again, I will just need
It's it's in the agenda, Jake. So if you click the link in the agenda, it should be right there.
I can share it too, if that's helpful.
Yeah, that'd be great, Joe. Thank you. Thank you, Joe. It's a little bit small, I think, in the I don't know if there's a way for you to zoom zoom in a bit. That's that's perfect. Thank you, Joe. The thought I had. And I'll look to Juliet and Curtis here, but in in point two, we could amend it. So that point two states every two years by the end of September, the school committee will conduct a formal evaluation of the superintendent based on the self-evaluation report and other pertinent information. Then point three can read following the formal evaluation and then it would continue. Would that be enough to remove the potential ambiguity? Or from from your perspective?
I think that would work for me. It's almost like three wants to be a a two A, right? Rather than a standalone three, but yeah, I think that would work. And also I just wonder if well. Yeah, because the formal evaluation is referring to the the state standards, right? So it's not just using the self-evaluation, it's actually using the state format. Okay. Yeah.
That's just the first, the first point you had. I don't know if our, the feedback that you heard from myself, Juliet and Jake was enough to, or that answered your or addressed your potential concern regarding the
Right. I guess my concern is that it will feel more onerous to try to evaluate over two years than over one. And that if we're on a regular cycle and I underst- I mean, Jake has to do the cell or the superintendent has to do the self-evaluation every year anyway. Right? So that at the end of annually, the superintendent will provide a self-evaluation. So why don't we just roll right into the evaluation and do it every year and then we're not trying to think what happened a year and a half ago, or you know, we would be. I guess my question is, would we be using two self-evaluation reports to generate one evaluation if we're doing it every two years? I guess that's what we would do, right?
I I think I maybe didn't understand the the question only because late in the day and
Sorry. So the superintendent is generating an a self-evaluation report annually. But if the school committee is only conducting a formal evaluation every other year, then we're saving that first self-evaluation until we get a second self-evaluation and then we're using both of them to generate an evaluation. And it seems like more work in some ways unless we're yeah, I I don't know.
I see what you're saying. That's I mean, it's a, that's a good question. I think in our discussions, we had viewed sort of like two types of assessment that the school committee would conduct. You know, the every two years would be, you know, a sort of a summative assessment of the superintendent's, you know, performance relative to state standards. But they would be built within our, you know, twice a year and annually, these formative assessments where the superintendent would be given feedback, constructive feedback regarding both, not just performance, but the goals potentially for the continued and new goals that were outlined for the for the current school year. The every two years was, I think, decided upon, as you heard from Julia, based on existing standards that exist as well as feedback that we receive from Jake with regards to what the experience was like. And I don't want to speak for you, Jake, but what the perception of the experience was like for you. You know, from what we were told and maybe Jake, I could leave it to you rather than speak for you. I should probably just have you explain.
Yeah, I
What that was like?
My thought, what Carrie's question is to to take point one that that's highlighted here and make that every other year as well. I that's, that's the other way to approach it and and I I don't know. I don't know. I would need to look at how that lines up with the state law or Julia, you
But then, sorry, Jake, if you were to do that, would you be doing a self-evaluation for a two-year period?
Yeah, I mean.
Can I, I, this is a, I I'm thinking about like almost the school analogy of a student's grade over the course of a semester is all the things they did every, like this the colle- collection of all of their assignments? Or is it the final exam? Like what have they, where are they actually? And and I guess in evaluation, I think getting a a self-evaluation report is maybe it should have a different name in that first in that first line. I feel we should be hearing, how does Jake think he's doing, right? And and but that doesn't have to be the evaluate, like, I think it's the sum total of where we are at the point of the evaluation, I guess, in my mind and and those points along the way, just keep the conversation going and and hopefully keep the conversation going in a way that can be supportive of of Jake and the district's goals, but.
I I'd love to hear from from other folks, given, you know, both what Carrie has shared, but maybe there some new questions or new perspectives that folks would like to share. And I may not have to change my view settings. I can see folks. Apologies. One second.
We could probably stop sharing the screen and be able to see each other better also.
Christina?
Yeah, so my question is along the lines of timing. So every two years, our membership could shuffle, right? Because of our voting practices. So I guess when I think about the every two years, which a part of it makes a ton of sense to me because the goals that are set are not necessarily short-term, one-year goals, their goals over a period of time. So it makes sense to do a broader look back in terms of of the success of those goals. And it could feel like, oh, you haven't met those goals, but really it's a long-term goal. So I understand the two-year process. My question is, do we does it align with our election process with the school committee? So somebody isn't looking at a a two-year goal midway through without having been able to see the reflection of the year prior. I don't know if I'm making any sense there.
I I think so. I think, you know, you can imagine that I'm trying to trying to figure out how it might look in terms of the makeup of the school committee. But potentially, I think what you're asking Christina is when we get to this formal evaluation that the school committee conducts, the makeup of the school committee could be different than it was, you know, two years prior. I think, is that your question? Is that like, so you're you're the concern that you're raising?
Yeah. I'm just wondering if it if we if if the two-year cycle aligns with that other two-year cycle of the committee.
If I may, it looks like they've done some alignment by making this an end of summer, early fall process, right? Even if it is happening every two years, it's happening before the next election. So presumably members will have been on either for a full year or for a full two years before a value, before engaging in this formal evaluation. And that's just going to vary depending on which year you're you're doing it in. I mean, you could try to set it so that you're not straddling an election year. Right? So make it every, make it odd years, right? That the evaluation will be done in odd years and that way I'm not sure that that's the correct way to do it, but you know what I mean? It's like the biennial election. We're always going to have member turnover and that's the the nature of it, but by having this process be in September, October, then you're catching members before they rotate off.
That that, thank you, Carrie. We we miss you dearly. We do, although Curtis is amazing and I think I've demonstrated on the weak link here, but did that answer your your question or the Christina?
Thank you.
Or Carrie's feedback? Any other questions? Or or perspectives or concerns regarding the policy as we have seen it, as we have seen it amended? The, Carrie, I wanted to go back to the concern you raised about this, the formal evaluation by the school committee happening every two years. We, as a policy and government, as we as a subcommittee, have acknowledged that you know, this is certainly we will get something we will revisit as the process plays out. And, you know, if feedback by the full committee or by the superintendent or by you know, whomever, we can reevaluate this particular policy and and amend it if it seems to be inadequate in terms of, you know, providing some functionality. I think we, I was going to say, I should be, I think it would be. And I think you you heard Julia bring this up. You know, this, this is a policy very much written with during a time at which the district has an excellent superintendent and with feedback from the superintendent on ways of making, you know, his job less cumbersome, shall we say? And 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 it could be, who knows, and years after, many years after, we have all left this, this, our 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 particular positions that this this may no, may be no longer functional. But I think at the moment, we as a subcommittee feel like this is a a process by which we can support our superintendent by which the the full committee can participate in the goal-defining processes, the process that the superintendent engages on or engages in and can provide both formative and summative, you know, assessments or evaluations of of the superintendent's performance. But sorry, I I think I cut you off, Carrie. You were going to say something.
No, I was just going to say, I think Jake's suggestion of making the self evaluation also every two years and having that encompass the two-year trajectory of the goals, right, would would clean it up in my mind, because that way I mean, the self-evaluation was enormously helpful in conducting the evaluation. It was just a matter of matching the standards and pulling that that all together, but if the self-evaluation is done annually, I feel like the school committee should be doing the work to respond to it. But if it's done every two years, then we're all in sync with doing the work at the same time.
Yeah, Julia, I think you look like you're on the verge of saying something.
I'm I'm puzzling over this one. I I I agree with your point, Carrie. And I think the self-evaluation is an opportunity for the ongoing conversation between the school committee and the superintendent about the work. And so to take it out feels that's a missed, a a really important missed opportunity for for I think especially for Jake to share, like not to assume we know all that's happening. You know, and maybe it's not the full-blown self-evaluation. Maybe there's another way. Maybe there's a different word for that in the intervening years, but I think that that's a really important part of the ongoing conversation.
I I, you know, Carrie, your perspective is is resonating with me as is Julia's perspective. And to avoid this having to go back to the subcommittee thing about, since it's sitting before us. You know, if we were to amend point one and have it read as every two years by the end of August, the superintendent will provide a self, a formal self-evaluation report to the school committee. Maybe it doesn't need the 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 word formal. But in point five, in the annually in November, we add the statement that the superintendent should provide a progress report that describes progress made towards goals and 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 the like, as a part of our conversations around continuing and or new goals for the current school year. It seems like it would, it would do both. It would provide that that point, Julia, that you are speaking to, you know, that is incredibly valuable to providing, you know, the superintendent a chance to to share with us progress made towards goals as well as an opportunity for us during a an open meeting to provide feedback on that progress. Does that, does that, is that a way forward that accomplishes sort of, you know, or satisfies the concerns that you both raised?
I would even suggest moving five, number five up to number one. I mean, if this is at the heart of it, right? Discussing the goal, setting the goal, discussing the goals, assessing the goals, how are we doing? Let's make that number one, and then the rest of it is is more the formality.
Julie, I just, I was, I mean, moving into one, I think, is is fine, but I wanted to with that you know, satisfy your concern and the, we might need to see this on screen again so we can keep track of the amendments. Jake or Joe?
It it satisfies now, now I wonder if it's how does it duplicate the twice a year, the superintendent, number four?
Right. So you know what apologies? Forget forget the progress report. Sorry, it escaped me completely about point four. So, yeah, right, right. Yeah. It could be that point four becomes point one, point five becomes point two, and then so on.
Yep.
I I'm good with that.
Joe, as I think you are, you are are manning the ones and twos, or someone's manning the ones and twos here. The suggestion for amendments would be to move point four and five to point one and two.
I still think five should be number one, four should be number two.
Yeah, yeah, five, yeah, yeah, twice a year, whichever, you know, however, but it would be proceeding the, I don't know if someone wants to dare take control of the mouse.
I can, I can take a stab at this, but I am really nervous about what 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 okay, so that is now
Point every two years, yeah. And point four, as it stands, would be point one or two. I'm not, I'm not sure it matters where where it sits.
And the point formerly known as point one goes
Good lord.
Is that?
That's right. And this would be every other year by the end of August. Or every two years, apologies.
Every two years rather than annually.
That's right.
If that's the case, it should be point three. Sorry.
That's right. Yeah. Yeah. That, I think that's right. That's it. I was going to say, before we move forward, I guess, Jake, I don't know if this is the time for us to gauge your reaction to these amendments. Do the, do these, how do these sit with you? As someone who is going to be stuck to it.
You you will keep in mind, my day started at seven fifteen this morning, filling in for the principal, vice principal and dean of students at Mount Greylock Regional School. This is all fine with me. As someone that's watched almost twenty years worth of superintendents come and go in the Berkshires, with the exception of Jim Brosnan, who has me outnumbered and outclassed. I I've yet to see a superintendent get fired based, I'll just be really blunt, I've yet to see a superintendent get fired based on this. I, I've yet to see a superintendent get fired based, I'll just be really blunt, I've yet to see a superintendent get fired based on this. Um, super, my, my, my class of people, we, we, we do something, or we mess something up, or we mess up a series of things, and it generally, just the handwriting gets on the wall for all involved, that it's time to go. Um, I feel very fortunate at this stage of my career to be with a, with a school committee and, and quite honestly, in two communities that are, um, really good about that's actually have a conversation and talk. So, so I, I will stick with, this all looks excellent. Um, I, I do like to think that, that the policies, when, when I go, whenever I go, that the policies will work for whatever school committees there and whatever superintendence there, although Jose, I definitely get to your point, that there is a, there's, there's a potential that this may want to be reexamined, and, and this will certainly work well, um, but, but I, but I will stick to just the, 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 really, the, the most valuable interactions to, to at least somebody that is hyper reflective anyway, it's really valuable. So I, I, but, but this is, this is good, and I, I'm deeply appreciative of all the thought that went into it, and, and it continues to go into it.
Continues, yes, always. Thank you.
Yeah, seriously.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Uh, Carrie and Julia, given what you're seeing here, are you satisfied what you're, what you have, what we have on paper?
Yes, thank you.
The, and anyone else, would anyone else like, or does anyone else have any comments or suggestions or, or questions regarding what we have? There's a temptation, as always, to beg Curtis to, uh, to share with us, his, his lovely voice. Um, I don't think there's a need to read the amendments, as we, I think, can all see them being amended in real time. I'm not sure, I think we need to make, how does this work?
I, I think I, I can move to amend the policy as discussed.
Is that the same thing as making a motion to approve the policy as amended?
Didn't.
Is that right? I don't know. I'm looking, we all look to Carrie for guidance.
I don't think we've had a motion yet, so.
We did, and we had a motion from the subcommittee that I seconded.
Yeah.
Oh.
So I think I will move to make the amendments as discussed.
Then we have to vote on the amendments. The other thing you could do is just retract the, you could retract the original movement, or the original motion, and then move the, the, um, policy as amended.
Okay, and the motion to retract the motion, that has to get made now, right, on the floor? There's, that, that's a new motion, right? Is that right? Or can, is that something that needs to be voted on?
I wonder if we can just vote over it. So you're saying that the original motion was made by the policy subcommittee and then seconded, like Christina?
I mean, my, my years of experience on the town meeting floor would say, we've just made a bunch of amendments, let's vote on the amendments, and then we can vote on the whole policy.
Yeah, that's fine.
What's the motion? But do we need to do anything with the motion that currently stands?
No, we're kind of working within that.
Working within it, got it. Okay, okay. So we, um, would anyone like to move? Think, is that you, Stephen?
Yeah, I was just wondering, do we need to say that these were all accepted as friendly amendments, or does that not matter?
I, I don't, I think if we're voting on the amendments, it doesn't, doesn't matter if they're friendly or not.
Okay.
They were.
They were, so it's just.
Yeah.
So Julia, you, you moved the amend, the amendments.
Yep.
We need a second to that, and then a motion on that, and then we go back.
I'll second the amendments to make it clean.
So then Jose, you're gonna have a vote on the amendment, and then you're gonna vote.
I will, just, just, just to, uh, make sure all above board, um, any discussion regarding the amendments?
Well, I, I was just saying, if they were taking as friendly amendments, you might not need to have the vote, but I'm fine just voting.
Okay. Okay, that's every, every month I learn something new. Hearing none, seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote to accept the motion to accept.
Amendments. Yeah, you're right.
Bo and I.
Henry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, by an I.
Green, I.
Milla, I.
All right, the motion to accept the amendments passes. Um, and then we have the remaining motion to accept the policy edits. And I don't think we can say as amended, or I don't know, I don't know what the, what the motion reads.
I think you can.
Okay, so we're, the motion as it stands is to accept this policy as amended, and it has been seconded already. Any discussion regarding, uh, the policy? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Bo and I.
Henry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, by an I.
Green, I.
Milla, I.
Right, the motion passes. Fantastic. Thank you, everyone, for your, honestly, your incredible feedback. Um, and hopefully, Jake, this won't, won't scare you away. Uh, Jake, I don't know if you were able to find our edits to policy BDE, or if we're able to, um, amend the Google Docs so that it reflects the policy that the subcommittee moved.
I believe this is what you the, the.
That is it.
Should.
Good. Yes, thank you, thank you.
Mark that down for my evaluation. From, from among my eight thousand open tabs, I could track that down.
Yeah, we've got to remember.
Now I'll forget.
Yeah, exactly. Um, so, uh, should we, I don't think so. The, the second read that Curtis provided stands barring the point four, where the subcommittee may make recommendations for committee action, but it may not, but, but it may not act for the school committee unless so delegated by the full committee. Um, this has been moved by unanimously by the policy and governance subcommittee. Would anyone like to second this?
I would.
Thank you, Stephen. Stephen seconds. Um, any discussion regarding the policy we see before us? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we'll do roll call vote, alphabetical order.
Bo and I.
Henry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, by an I.
Green, I.
Milla, I.
All right, the motion passes to, uh, um, adopt this policy. We have three first reads that, uh, we would like to share for discussion. Uh, the first up is policy BDA, school committee organization meeting. I think we should, I don't know, I don't know if you enjoy us calling upon you, Curtis, because we enjoy it, but I don't know if you enjoy it.
It's entertaining the cats to no end to hear.
Okay, fantastic, fantastic. All right, would you, would you mind providing the first read of policy BDA, school committee organizational meeting?
Oh, you don't have to, I mean, yeah, I guess you can share a screen for them, for those viewing the recording at home. Uh, all right. Policy BDA, school committee organizational meeting, discussion item on the school committee agenda will be read. Uh, for the purpose of organizing the school committee at its regular November meeting, will elect from its membership a chair, a vice chair, and a clerk, all of whom will hold their respective offices for a term of one year or until a successor is elected. The November organizational meeting shall be held if there are elections that year. In the event the chair and vice chair are no longer members of the school committee, the senior member in terms of years served will act as the chair pro temp. A majority of the members of the school committee will constitute a quorum. Nominations for chair, vice chair, and clerk will be requested at the October board meeting. The chair will then appoint, appoint an ad hoc nomination subcommittee to nominate a slate of officers at the November meeting. The ad hoc nomination subcommittee will be composed of three school committee members who have not been nominated or declined nomination for the chair or vice chair. The ad hoc nomination subcommittee will explore the interests of each nominated individual, as well as how their experience aligns with the current school committee needs. The ad hoc nomination subcommittee may also solicit additional interest from other school committee members should the need arise, especially to attempt balance of leadership across the district's sending communities. Based on these discussions, the nominating committee will present a slate of officers at the November meeting for election. The November election will proceed as follows. A nomination for the office of chair, one, haha, a nomination for the office of chair will be made by the ad hoc nominations subcommittee. The chair will be elected by a majority roll call vote of the members present and voting. If the nominee does not receive a majority vote, the election will be declared null and void, and nominations will be reopened. Two, upon election, the new chair will preside, calling for the election of a vice chair and clerk in order. The procedure used for their election will be the same as that for electing the chair. Any vacancy among the officers occurring between organizational meetings will be filled by a member elected by the school committee. The election will be conducted as described above, following election of officers at its organizational meeting. The school committee may proceed into such regular or special business as scheduled on the agenda.
Thank you, Curtis, as always. Um, we welcome feedback, uh, from the full committee and from our community, communities. Um, Stephen, you're first up.
Right, so, um, I've got a couple of, uh, questions. So first, we're changing the name of secretary to clerk.
That I, um, don't know when or where that change took place. Apologies for that, and if it should read as secretary, we can amend it, so.
The, can I just point out, the black text is what was there before?
Right.
So, and it's clerk, so I don't know why.
That's right, we've always called it second, I mean, again, doesn't really matter. One of the big issues, of course, is always that we don't know in October who's going to be serving in November. One of the, uh, items was that the senior member of the committee should have needed eyes or something like that, would be the tier pro temp. There may not be a unique individual who satisfies that.
So Stephen, which are you the, um, are you, so I'm just gonna make sure, when we reconvene, the, the subcommittee reconvenes, you would like us to consider either an alternative to determining who might be appointed in this position, or language that would address um, the, you know, the potential for, for two or three individuals sort of meeting that requirement, or meeting that, whatever.
Right, is, is just to be clear, or you just took it down, um, just to be clear, because you could have multiple individuals who were elected at the same time and have the same seniority. You might not have a unique individual. So how do you decide? You could do it alphabetically, you could do it by, you know, randomly choosing, you know, a number, but just something to spell out what it is.
Yeah.
Uh, you also talked about forming a nomination committee for people who have not been nominated. And you said it would have, I think, three members?
The ad hoc committee, is that what you're asking about?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
What, what if you don't have three people who haven't been nominated? This is me being a mathematician, and, you know, these are unlikely situations, but
Yeah.
you, you want to be very careful about your, and then the ad hoc committee is going to present just one name for each position? This is going to be the slate?
That's, I, that's right, if I remember Julia, yeah, that's right. Um.
So is, I mean, we're a small enough group, is there a reason why we have to have a slate presented by the ad hoc committee? Especially when we're gonna have committee members who are going to be potentially elected in November and not be around to participate in these discussions? I'm, I'm just concerned about the new voices not being able to be adequately heard in something like this. And while the conversations are sometimes awkward, I strongly support having these conversations in public where every member of the committee is free to speak. If you have a slate that's brought forward, that definitely is going to color the conversation. And I think it might suppress some of the new members from involvement.
So Stephen, the, um, as it stands, nominations are made on the floor of the November, first, with the November meeting following an election. That process allows for potentially for new committee, newly elected committee members to be nominated for one of these three positions. Um, and what you're saying, I think your concern is that, um, the policy, the policy edits, as you see, as we have before us, would prevent that from ever happening. And that's.
It's not that it would, it's not that it would prevent it from happening, but it would color the conversation by saying the ad hoc committee is putting forward these names. And you have some people who will have, I mean, who have just started serving, so they may not be able to be part of any of the conversations. And it's just, I just think it puts the conversation in an interesting place if you come into the meeting with certain people already nominated.
Okay, um, yeah, thank you, Stephen. Carrie?
Thanks, Jose. Um, I have kind of a similar question or issue. I'm, I'm wondering, what, what is the rationale for the changes in, in, in our policy? Um, that might help me to understand what the purpose of the nominating committee is.
Um, yeah, that's a great question, Carrie. So this is, you know, just from, uh, um, the, I don't know how, how best to describe this. This is to help address the potential, well, I don't know, but Ju- Julie, I think you can better verse what I'm trying to say. Thank you.
So I, I, I think I may have been the one creating these suggestions, and, and what was behind that were two things. One is, um, the way we elect our officers now feels truly ad hoc. We're not, it, um, it's either truly ad hoc, we haven't thought as a committee, or we haven't thought strategically around, um, who will be leading the committee. Um, we've been fortunate in this, but we haven't necessarily, um, spent the time thinking about it, uh, in advance, and I think that there, um, could be different people who are, should be, who, who we might want to be leading the committee at different times for different reasons. Um, second, my own experience has been, there's like, there's the potential for violating the open meeting law and having side conversations, um, in advance of the November meeting, and so putting a process in place where that, this is actually, ad hoc subcommittees also follow the open meeting law, this is all open meeting law conversations around how do we want our, our group to be governed, uh, you know, how do we want to govern ourselves? So I, I think this makes it more explicit, and it creates, I, I, I hear the, I hear the concerns, and, and, you know, I appreciate, um, this, this point Steve's making. I think we could actually even potentially try to have a, you know, like, try, change the, you know, try to address those, but I do think that, um, there can be conversations that are happening outside that could potentially end up violating the open meeting law, and this makes everything more transparent and public.
So I guess my follow-up question is, why would we not, um, insert something into the October agenda for the full school committee to have that discussion? Because you're, you're suggesting that there be an ad hoc committee just for that period of time between the October and the November meeting. It could just be a discussion at the full school committee level during that October meeting. Who's interested in in serving, um, and then, then you're not creating another uh, element in the process that, that could, um, I, I'm just, I'm, I'm just not quite sure
Right.
the nomination subcommittee is solving the.
You're right, you're, I think, Carrie, I
Question.
Your, your question is, is resonating with me, and I just wanted to make sure I understand it fully. Um, so that the subcommittee can discuss it. So the, you know, I think you're to address, you know, the concern that Julia has raised. You know, we can solve this problem, and I think it's articulated in the policy now, where, you know, at, uh, an October meeting, nominations will be made. It could just stop there, because then the full committee knows who's willing, um, to serve To serve in these particular roles. And then the following November meeting, those would be the candidates that the full committee would consider. Is that, is that right, Carrie? And you wouldn't need the, I think what you're saying is that there's no need then for an ad hoc domination of the Subcommittee. Is that right?
So it, it sounds like the ad hoc committee is meant to address. Issues that people may not feel comfortable talking about in a public meeting. Right? But then it is a public meeting, so, so it may not be as public a meeting, but it is a public meeting, and I. I don't, I don't quite see how. Like if you have three people who express an interest, and then you have. Three other people who are serving on a nominations committee getting together to discuss those three people. It, that feels weird to me somehow, rather than just having the conversation at this October meeting as a full committee.
So, so one. Complicating factor to this point is how we vote. Right? We only consider one candidate at a time. And if we could change how we vote, I could feel very differently. But it feels very weird to me that we only consider one candidate at a time in the way that we vote.
I mean, in, in the past, we've actually voted on multiple people for chair simultaneously. And we've had people say, who do you, who are you voting for?
Uh, that'd be great, that's not how we did it in the.
Right, but I'm saying in, in the past, and I, I, I think that's a better way as we look at all the candidates. And then as a mathematician, I can give you a five-hour lecture if you want on all the different voting systems.
So in other words, open the floor for any candidate who wants to serve as. Care would be the first one. And then all the candidates are put forward, and then you vote. Yeah, and that's the, then the opportunity to make arguments. In favor or.
Yes.
You know, to, to make an argument about why one would want to serve or not serve or.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and just to, and Steven, I want to acknowledge that your hand is up. To, to ask a question beyond what you've just shared with us, or your hand is down. I mean, I don't know, but Jake or Joe. If we were to amend or introduce language somewhere that spoke to how the vote would take place. That, that language would sit within this policy, is that correct, within policy BDA? In terms of how the, the voting would occur.
You certainly could do that, and I'm, I'm blanking on the, on the term that is used to describe a vote where. Whoever receives the largest number of votes, I don't know if it's a ballot vote or something else, but it's. It, it has a term within Robert's Rules of Order, and we've used it when voting to select a superintendent in the past. I think we've used it when voting to select a Chair of the Committee in the past too, four or five or six years ago.
Okay.
So there's a specific phrase for the type of vote that you would use annually to select a Chair, and if that. Cuts this down to just a couple sentences, it would be a win in the policy book, probably.
Um, Steven, did you, did you have a comment? Your hand was up, and then I think you.
Yes, um, so, so that, that was one of my comments, and then the other was just related more to the issues with the ad hoc committee. Because you could have, you know, two people nominated for Chair, two people nominated for Vice Chair, that might be different, and you might not actually have three people. And then just, you know, some of the issues with that, and then just reiterating the fact that with the discussions Carrie was having, I agree with her points. And just want to add that we may not know who's going to be serving on the committee. So you could actually have people on the ad hoc committee who are actually no longer on the school committee.
Right. Um, I just want to summarize what I think I heard regarding. How this potential policy could be modified at our next Subcommittee meeting. So one of the considerations that I think we'll make. Uh, which would be to, you know, remove any reference to an ad hoc nomination Subcommittee. Make clear that we would be accepting nominations for these three positions at our October meeting. That then would be voted on. Well, yeah, voted on in a sort of ballot style voting at the November meeting. Um, if I, I think I heard that, that's what I understood, and, but I'm, I'm, I want to, if folks could correct me if I miss, misunderstood or misheard.
So I guess my question about the October to November is how to. Avoid lobbying, so to speak, between the two meetings.
That's true.
Um, and it may be that November is the meeting where all of this happens, but by changing the vote. Voting process, it satisfies the concern.
Yeah, I, I think it's a valid concern, and I, I still worry that we. The lobbying would, would still, could still happen regardless, you know, even if we were to move the domination process to, to November.
Yeah.
But I think, I think we have a lot here in terms of the feedback we've been given. For us to consider, you know, in terms of potentially sending back to the full committee a, 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 a new draft of this policy. Julia, do you feel? You got, we got the feedback, Curtis, did you, do you feel like we got the feedback? That we need? Thumbs up, um, we'll be considering this. It's probably written at the bottom of our agenda when our next Subcommittee meeting is scheduled, but I don't remember. So we will be, you know, continue to send us feedback. Between now and then, uh, both members of the full committee and, 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 and members of, uh, of our communities. All right. I think we're ready to move on, reading the room here. Um, we've got two other first reads that we need to share with you. Uh, we'll call upon. Curtis again to, if you wouldn't mind to read through BGB, Policy Adoption.
As we fly through the fortieth minute of this. On policy. BGB, yes? The adoption, the policy adoption policy. Um, adoption of new policies or changing existing policies is solely the responsibility of the school committee. Policies will be adopted and or amended only by the affirmative vote of a majority of the members of the school committee. When such action has been scheduled on the agenda of a regular or special meeting. To permit time for study of all policies or amendments to policies and to provide an opportunity for interested parties to react. Proposed policies or amendments will be presented as an agenda item to the committee in the following sequence. One, information item, distribution with agenda. Two, discussion item, reading of the proposed policy or policies, response from superintendent. Report from any advisory committee assigned responsibility in the area, committee decision and directions for any redrafting. Three, action item, discussion, adoption or rejection. Amendments to the policy at the action stage will not require repetition of the sequence unless the co- the committee so directs. The school committee may dispense with the above sequence to meet emergency conditions by way of a majority vote. Policies will be effective upon the date set by the school committee. This date will ensure that affected persons have an opportunity to become familiar with the requirements of the new policy prior to its implementation.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Curtis. Any, any comments or feedback regarding this very small, but we feel important policy amendment?
So, is it clear, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Steven.
Is it clear how many meetings that one, two and three take place over?
You mean, some, these would be three separate Subcommittee meetings and three separate full committee meetings?
I might just make that explicit that these are at three meetings and not three items potentially in one meeting.
I see what you're saying, so, okay, okay.
I mean, I, I was pretty sure that that was the intent.
Right.
But the way it's written, it's not clear.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Carrie?
Uh, thanks, Jose. My question is about the process for waiving the process, so it says. The school committee may dispense with the above sequence to meet emergency conditions by way of majority vote. What, what is that vote? Um, does the school committee need to vote to waive the entire process, or can it waive part of the process?
That's a good, that's a good question, and I think something for us to consider how we want to. Communicate or describe this process. Um, I think in practice, we can call upon, you know. Our life during the pandemic where, you know, points one and two were waived because of perceived emergen- you know. And, and, and the real emergency conditions that, that we had all experienced. But that's a good question, and I think it's something for us to, to consider, you know, what we mean by, by that statement.
And it could be also that you say that, that you. Change it to say something akin to, um, should the school committee? Wish to dispense with the above sequences to meet emergency conditions, it will require a vote to waive. The first and second. You know, something like that, just be very specific about what is required.
Yeah. No, that's helpful. I need to write this down, apologies. Any other feedback regarding this particular policy, a policy amendment? All right. One final policy that we need to offer a first read for is, uh, policy KCD. Public gifts. To the schools, and we'll call upon. Our trusted friend. Mister Alphabon.
This one's only seventy-three pages long. Uh, policy is actually, I think, the shortest one. Uh, policy KCD, public gifts to the schools with changes. The superintendent will have authority to accept gifts and offers of equipment for the schools in the name of the committee when the gift is of educational value. In the case of gifts from industry, business, or special interest groups, no extensive advertising or promotion may be involved in any donation to the schools. Without the express approval of the school committee. Gifts that would involve changes in school plants or sites will be subject to school committee approval. Gifts will automatically become the property of the school system. Any gift of cash, whether or not intended by the donor for a specific purpose, will be accepted by vote of the school committee. Handled as a separate account and expended at the discretion of the committee as provided by law. The committee directs the superintendent to assure that an appropriate expression of thanks is given all donors.
Thank you, Curtis, thank you. Thank you. Um, any feedback on this? First read.
I have a question. So. If we set up a five oh one C three, for instance, for gifts for the track and field project. Would that still be considered going to the schools? Or would we need another policy to govern those kinds of gifts?
Joe?
I believe what would happen is the, the five one C three, which the school committee does not control. Um, the district does not control, would come before the district and say. Currently, we've raised X dollars to donate to the school. Um, and the school committee would ultimately be responsible for accepting, accepting that gift to the school district. Um, it, it's just the school committee itself would not be actively fundraising for me to these people, so it's. Um, it's not money laundering, but it sounds like it when I describe it the way I just did. Uh, but it's perfectly legal, because that's the way the government requires us to do it.
But, but at this point, according to this policy. Even corporations can give. Money to the school. For a specific purpose.
We, we, we do, like many schools, we annually receive, like, for instance, the. The gift that has become annual from General Dynamics for the purpose of robotics. Uh, team funding, um, things like that, so we, we certainly do receive gifts from. From a variety of entities. Um, but we are not out as a fundraising organization. Which I think is the difference within the law. I, I would actually need to try to look at that more closely, it's kind of, I'm a little bit fuzzy right now.
Uh, Jake, I don't know if you, uh, can't see you in my gallery view. Would you like to make any comments regarding this, this, this edit, this policy? Or suggested edit, I should say. Where are you, Jake?
You're muted, Jake.
Sorry, thank you. Um, this is pretty specifically targeted at. Looking at some major fundraising efforts by a, by. What will be a nonprofit entity in order to help raise as much money as possible for the track and field project. And, um, there, there may be opportunity, and, and I think it's a, a wise. Thing to, to consider, that for made a major gift or major gifts. That we do indeed want to consider the naming, uh, or, or a sponsorship. Of. The facility as a whole or substantive pieces of the facility. Uh, so, this is, this is really looking to anticipate a major fundraising effort. For a major upgrade to our campus and indeed be the first new. Uh, middle or middle and high school track and field facility built in the Berkshires since the nineteen sixties. And, and the lone, uh, high school, uh, facility that would be capable of hosting a, a. A state tournament level track meet. Right now, Williams College has the lone. Track and field facility that, that could do that. Um, so, so we are, we're all well aware of the gap we're trying to close in terms of funding, and this is a, uh. An anticipatory way to consider closing some of that funding gap for this really exciting proposal, uh, around the new facility.
May I make a? I had actually thought that, wh- when this policy was going for revision, I don't know if the writing in red. I don't know if we want that there. We, we, we might want to run that through legal counsel again, just because that, that to me might. Indicate that you act, that the school committee would be involved in. In advert- in advertising and promotion, which we, we wouldn't want, but what we did want. Originally, when we were talking as a fundraising group about this, was that, there's the, there's the few words here that says that. The superintendent can only have the authority to accept gifts that are of educational value. So if somebody were to come along and say, I'd like to donate a whole bunch of track and field equipment. I, I want to donate twenty-five thousand dollars worth of hurdles. Technically, this policy doesn't allow that because it's not of educational value. I mean, y- y- you could make all kinds of claims potentially, but I, I, one intent here was to say that, you know, it was a value to the district. Or a value to students, um, which I think was. I think that was the only edit that we really. Needed.
Joe was gonna say, see, I, I want to, uh. Acknowledge that I see your hand, Julia, but I want to ask Joe, even if we could steal ten minutes of your time, when the Subcommittee. Um, reconsideres this, just to make sure we fully understand that perspective and, and understand your, your sense of the language. Um, Julia?
I'll save my comments for the, for that, um, why I think we need that red, that's why. Our Subcommittee.
Okay. Any other comments or, or feedback regarding, uh, this potential policy amendment? All right, that is it from us, uh, the school committee, full committee in, in our. Our folks, uh, in our fellow communities can see that policy BEA is listed as an information item. Um, we welcome feedback on the three discussion items, uh, between now and when the Subcommittee meets. And I don't know where we stand, Curtis. I've lost track, Christina, but I'm, I'm, I'm happy to pass the microphone back to you.
Where you stand in terms of your time limitations?
Oh, yes, I think you scheduled thirty minutes, we were well beyond that.
Yeah, I think Jake now has negative thirty minutes to present, so he's going to be on rapid mode for this next. You know, those, the, the, the end. You know, those, the, the, the end of the um. Medication commercials, that's what, is what we can expect coming up. Um, so next up on the agenda, and I am kidding, Jake, please don't do that. Um, is the superintendent report.
Yeah, I'll, I'll start off with the, the, one of the harder conversations we've had to engage in, and I think it will continue to be a conversation, so I'll, I'll say what I. Feel I need to say, and then uh, and anybody else can weigh in, or we can move on. Um, I I would echo Julia's um sentiments and Jose's sentiments about consideration of not moving forward with the D I B director. Um, I suspect there's several other members uh, of this committee and and. Dozens and dozens and dozens of people in the community who would, who would echo the same. Um, I, you know, the reality of of. Searching for the right person for this position and advertising. Is that it, it is an incredibly challenging position. It was not a position that we put together blithely or um. Just uh, because it was the, the thing to do at the time. It's a vital, important. Position that can bring the district capabilities to do. Hyper-vital, hyper-important work. It's a challenging position. It's a position that requires um, a truly, truly exceptional. Individual who who has expertise in, in uh, across a variety of of areas. Uh, and on top of those, those expertise sets and ability to communicate that's almost on a a different level than I can imagine. Uh, and and given that we've had this position posted and open for. Eight or nine months and. Kept looking, kept looking. Came close. Had a withdrawal of of a candidate that that was really um, meeting, meeting this. I I I think we we're, we're on the, on the edge of hitting pause again for. Non-financial reasons. Um, if we, if we. Do stop this now in the midst of our budget process, if we stop this search. Um, it is perhaps in the immediate because of um. Budgetary concerns, but it is, it, 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 I certainly consider it a another pause, not a, not a stoppage, and certainly not a retreat. From, from the need to do this. In the meantime, if we are to hit an extended pause. We do have a team of people in the district and access to people in the community um, through, through uh. Various means, including consultants. Who can maybe put in some time and effort to building better structures. To make us more ready and more prepared to actually do another search and to welcome this individual as a colleague into our district to help us all. Do better work for, for all of our students. Um, we do understand their H R pieces to this, their recruiting and retention pieces to this work. There is um, the reporting and the response to reporting. There's the training of our, of our staff across the organizational chart, starting with, with me and running through the rest of the chart. There is the uh, professional development piece, the working in the community piece, and the proactive piece to make sure that, that. Belonging with a capital B is what. People are feeling when they enter our school and our school community. Um, we, we have some excellent people on our team and and surrounding us that we can, we can do some of this work together. And and I think we can create a, a place where we are better positioned to do a better search and and to welcome uh, this truly extraordinary person that is out there. Into our midst when we are um, certain, more certain that we can afford it. And uh, perhaps better positioned to make use of it. So that's a, that's a really long way of saying what I've already said, which I would. I would at, at worst, see this as uh, in an extended pause, not a break. From our vision for this position and certainly not a break. From the work that we know that we need to do, that the, the gray lock listening and learning process told us we need to do, and that our panorama survey data, when it comes back, I'm confident will continue to tell us that we need to do it. The time I spend with uh, our students and their families. Tells us that, and and I know the same is true for all of you. So that, that is. You know, just a, a, an early response to what we've heard tonight around the budget as we continue to seek another um. You know, close to a half a million dollars in, in savings that allow us to continue to be. A responsive regional school district to the needs, wants of our students, our families, and the bigger community. Uh, but also be, and I've heard this word used several times tonight. Be responsible, responsible and responsive partners to our, our town and municipal counterparts that are. That are feverishly working and have been to figure out how to make the towns work. Um, for the, for the good of the people that uh, that are fortunate enough and to call the towns home, that, that we're fortunate enough to serve. Um, I am going to move through. I'm gonna do a brief. Share screen. And uh, Jo- Julia.
That sounds like you're moving to the next item on your agenda. I don't want to cut you off of.
Yes, I was, I was.
Just given, I'm just gonna ask uh, kind of point of order. Uh, it's nine fifteen. I can imagine this next topic. Given the importance of. Of. Code of conduct and how we um, implement it in our districts is so central to our, to the school culture. I can imagine it being a really long conversation. Potentially, and given the hour, I wonder if we can actually move it um, till our next meeting. So that we can ensure we give it the amount of attention. Due.
Uh, I am certainly very comfortable moving it, and I think if we were to move it, I would ask um, principal shuts to, to join me in presenting it. I I don't want um. You know, just full transparency for everybody on the committee and and to anybody that is watching this or will be watching this. Um, we, we have had, and we're not alone. I've talked to superintendents across the county and other school staff across the county, and I would guess. Uh, nationally, we, we have. Well, I I'm, I'm just not even gonna worry about being elegant. I'll just speak the, the truth as I'm seeing it right now. We, we have one grade level in our middle school that we are really, really finding ourselves challenged by. Um, behaviorally. And um, that is, that is not to say that there is a, a single um, bad student in that particular grade level, having spent uh, really all week over there. Um, and and getting ready to spend another day tomorrow, I'm even more convinced of that than I was uh, at this time last week. But there is some deep, deep need uh, in, in that particular grade level. And there is some deep, deep, deep frustration by some of the students and some of the families of the students in that grade level that come to school every day. With uh, high hopes, big aspirations. Deep intellects and big dreams who want to take advantage of every minute that they are in school to further their own education and further their own hopes and dreams. And that's probably about ninety percent, ninety-five percent of the grade level I am speaking of. Uh, on, on some days, probably ninety-eight or ninety-nine percent. So uh, I would just want you all as elected representatives from our two towns, uh, and all, any family that may be watching this to know. Um, we, we. We are not only commiserating with our colleagues around the county about this particular grade level, a grade level that I think really got, got um. I think COVID hit them at a, at a kind of a devastating time in their development socially and emotionally. Um, and I think that's showing, and I think some of their life situations are showing. And um, I think we have a vision of the work we need to do, short term, medium term, and long term, in order to best serve these kids, so that we can serve all of our kids. Um, and I, I. Just need you all and need the community. I'm here to serve. We're all here to serve, to know. We're very aware of this. We hear the frustrations. I'm grateful for the families that have weighed in with me. Um, I'm grateful for the students that have weighed in with me, grateful for the teachers and the paraprofessionals and the other staff members who have weighed in with me. And um, we will be moving forward to, to create a better environment for all kids to, to uh. To do, to do the great things that they're all capable of, but I would very much appreciate being able to. Present next month so that we can be a little uh. A little more thorough. If, if that would be okay. Uh, and I, and I don't know the, the governance structure to make that happen either, except to, to suggest to the chair that we. Perhaps just put this on hold until the uh, April school committee meeting. I think Christina looks frozen to me.
Yeah, she's frozen.
So I. I am going to um, Yep Her just texted me that her internet just died, so Carrie as co-chair or as a vice chair. I'll, I'll. Ask your permission to, to put a pin in this, and we'll connect on this in April.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. And enjoy it. Thank you for uh, for, for that suggestion and uh.
Can I make a brief comment?
Sure.
This, this is related to another um, you know, policy item. Where our policy was listed about remote meeting participation. Where it says you have to be able to be seen at all times. There are going to be times when people are going to be in a place where the video is not good. And so when the policy committee is meeting, they might want to rethink about that language right now. I know I have internet issues in my house, which is why. Um, I, you know, try to conserve bandwidth. So I just wanted to, given that we just lost somebody because of connections, want to make sure that our policy would allow, because I would hate to lose. Her voice when she could just call in, but not, you know, do a video. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Steve. Um, and I, I do. You know, we're, we're not gonna spend much time on the agenda item where we, we talk about getting ready to go back to in-person meetings. I'm not certain that we're actually there. Um, we have a lot of technical work that will be able to. The, the bridge that gap because we know the schedules that you all keep. We know the schedules that folks in future are going to keep and um, and that's helpful feedback for the. Policy subcommittee, though, as we further, as they further consider how to um. Do this work. So I am going to jump in to the piece of the presentation that was around. The school calendar. Um, you all have a copy of the school calendar in the agenda. There's, there's still pieces of it to be determined. Um, but I, I do want to um. Just hit a couple of highlights for folks. You know, that may be watching. Uh, for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we are asking our faculty and staff to report back to school on Monday, August twenty-eighth. Uh, our first day of school for students, um, full day. Uh, for grades one through twelve will be Wednesday, August thirtieth. Um, pre-K and kindergarten will actually start September fifth, which will be a half day. And then September sixth, their second day will also be a half day. Um, half days for faculty and staff development are September fifteenth. October sixth and October twenty-seventh, January twelfth, February ninth, and March fifteenth. The trimesters and quarters you will notice on the calendar are yet to be determined. I know that the folks in the schools are working on that. And we, as always, of course, have a hundred and eighty school days uh, accounted for. We have five weather days that you can see in June, and then uh, days that we need to make up at the end of the year. Four weather days or days where a water main is broken, or for any other reason that we can't have school. Will be half days as we approach um, the end of the year. I don't know, this, this calendar is really a, pretty much a carbon copy of the calendar bef- before it. The, the one nuance that may look strange to you or may look like a, an error to you. Um, the Friday before, the, the Friday before. The December into January and New Year's break. Um, that is a day that, that we've really talked about. Um, that, that is correct, that that Friday is off. It's December twenty-second. Um, we, we simply want to. Two things. So we want to accommodate many families that do travel, who, who, who may be celebrating holidays around that time. And we want to be realistic about having um, enough people to staff the school and then having uh, kids in school. Uh, uh, upon whom to use that staff. And the way that the days work out this year, it's, it's a pretty short December into January break anyway. And um, you know, uh, our observation this year with all of our school breaks is that everybody really needs them. Uh, and and needs that time to recollect and recoup and to enjoy their uh, their family. So that's the school calendar, and we would ask for you to uh. To, to, to vote for this tonight so that we can start, you know, we've, we've had families calling for about a month who are trying to line up summer plans, summer camps, vacations. Work schedules for high school students, et cetera, so um. Uh, you know, it'll be good to get this done here in early March, so we can communicate it to the families we serve.
I'll move to accept this. School calendar.
I'll second.
Okay. That's awesome. Any further discussion on the calendar?
I just want to say December twenty-second is my birthday, so I approve.
I thought, I thought that was between us, Curtis, that, that we, we elfin bind day. You know, so.
Uh, it, well, it's actually me and Andy Gibb of the Bee Gees, so you gotta split it.
Staying alive.
Oh, boy. Okay. Any further discussion?
Um, I just had a question about uh, union approval. I mean, I assume this is all within contract. Um, I mean, given that we are negotiating a new contract, is this? Subject to approval by the union or?
There, I don't believe it's subject to approval by the union, but as a, as a piece of an old contract, there is the, the. This is really about the earliest date that we allowed by contract that we can ask um, the faculty and staff to return, so, but it's solidly there within what, what, what is allowable. Yep, good question. Thank you for that, Carrie.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfen Gib, I.
Reen, I.
Mila, I.
Thank you. That motion passes unanimously.
We, um, I don't know how much there is to discuss on, on uh. What seemed at the time we were putting the agenda together as an imminent return to um, a necessity for full-time meetings, as Carrie was good enough to share from. From M A S C, it looks as though the, the Commonwealth is, is. Perhaps in a, in a different place to consider that maybe. There's some merit to continuing this, particularly for, for places where um. You know, you're just driving a lot of miles to gather in person at a meeting, so um. We had a long conversation with uh, with, with um, Jack from Willie Net before we got started here this evening, and Rob Winok and I have spent some time together, so we will be. We will be ready for whatever comes uh, for uh, April meetings. Um, and we will certainly keep you informed of where the uh. Where the uh. Legislature is in terms of its process to consider a continuation of this through uh, until twenty-twenty-five, I believe, Carrie.
Yeah, that's what's being proposed.
Good. Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you. So on the MASC updates, there I don't know how many of you are on the MASC listserv. You're all like eligible eligible to be on it, and I would encourage you to join it. You just email MASC to join it. And there have been a number of resolutions that have been passing over the listserv. Two of them, we dropped into this packet just by way of information, but I also wanted to read if it's okay with you, Christina, a portion of an email from Jason Frazier specifically about this universal free school meals action. This is something that I feel strongly about. I think a lot of our school committee members across the state feel strongly about. Massachusetts has been good about funding universal school lunch, but it needs to continue funding it. And I know that the National School Board Association has been lobbying for to make this universal across the the country. So I'll just read a portion of this email from Jason, partly in response to some of the resolutions that have come across from various school districts. Many of you have reached out for information as to how best to support two pieces of legislation. So this is House Docket 766 and Senate Docket 1013 to make permanent universal school meals for the students of Massachusetts Public Schools. While passing a resolution of your school committee is a powerful symbolic act, if that's the end of the action, it will most likely have little effect on your local neighbors or your local legislators' votes. It is far more powerful to have each of your school committee members as individual constituents of your legislature reach out with a phone call or email to express support. It cannot be stressed enough that your voice as a constituent is the most powerful voice to your legislators on Beacon Hill. Make sure to include your address on emails and voicemails. Additionally, Governor Healy announced a $282 million supplemental budget for the remainder of this fiscal year, which includes additional $65 million for this year's universal school meal program, which has almost exhausted the $120 million allocated in the FY23 budget. The supplemental budget has yet to pass through the legislature, so in theory, there is a threat to this year's program. Here is some language to support the bills and the supplemental budget or to craft a resolution, and I'll pass this on to the committee. But I just wanted to encourage us to be aware that this is an issue that I think we should all be fighting for, either as a committee or as individual members of school committees. This and obviously funding for special education, which we are facing, you know, our district, like every district across the state. So we don't have a resolutions subcommittee of our committee. I don't know if that's something that this committee is interested in doing. Whether that could be delegated to one of our existing subcommittees, but it's something to think about. Because it is one way of having a voice at the state level. And if we had resolutions that we wanted to submit to the MASC, they could come up for, you know, a vote at the annual resolutions. You know, committee meetings. So it's just something to think about. And again, I'll forward this email, but I would also encourage you all to be on the listserv so that you can see these as they come across. That's it.
Thank you, Carrie. Okay, next up in the agenda, upcoming meetings. Finance, March 23rd via Zoom. And April 6th, expected to be in person at 4:00 PM. Is there a time for the March 23rd meeting?
So the finance subcommittee meetings are all at 4 o'clock.
They're all.
At least they are now. The in-person, I think, was when we thought we were going to be in person. So I'm not sure if that's going to be in person.
I think that's the idea of all of these being expected. There's a chance of these.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind, however, Christina, if that special school committee budget preview, March 23rd. I don't know, would it make sense to try to do that in person in the public hearing? I don't know. I mean, I I look to to Joe also in terms of the public hearing. Is there an expectation that we're going to be doing that virtually this year?
I am not 100% sure whether or not the notice already was submitted to the newspapers indicating, because I think the plan was as of maybe last month, that it would just be remote because that would be on one of the last two days that it could be, and rather than all of a sudden shifting to in person and perhaps throwing some people off if they wanted to attend, it would just remain remote. But the the only thing that would make it difficult for us to change that would be if the notification had already gone out, because then we would have already declared it to be remote. But we can check on that and modify if the committee, if we can, and the committee wants to do so.
Jake, do you think we would be able to have that? I guess my concern would be would we be able to have sort of that hybrid solution ready by then? That that would be my concern. I don't think we will. Joe?
I wouldn't want a meeting like that to be our guinea pig for it.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, we we.
Sorry, I shouldn't say guinea pig. I I take that back. It shouldn't be our test case.
We we could have something that would work, but it is very likely it's going to be far from ideal. And I think test case is well phrased and maybe even guinea pig. So.
Okay. So special school committee budget preview, March 23rd at 6:00 PM, currently via Zoom. School committee budget public slash public hearing, March 30th at 6:00 PM. Policy and governance, April 12th at 5:00 PM. Currently in person could be Zoom. And our next school committee meeting, our regular session, school committee meeting is April 13th at 6:00 PM, and that's expected to be in person, could be Zoom. Lots of meetings. We're in budget season. So thank you, committee, for your time and commitment to the district during this time. I do not have any other items for discussion. So agenda requests. Okay, hearing none, I would like to make a motion to enter into executive session with intent to return to open session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, A Section 21A1 to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual. Sickly blank vote if needed to take place from returning to open session. B, Section 21A3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. All bargaining units. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Curtis, second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, roll call?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfen, bye, I.
Green, I. Okay, it is 9:36. Joke, you.
Yep. I opened it up. All right. Jack, if you're there, you might want to put the placeholder screen up. Or I'll just be on TV for a while.
So, Joe, what you guys up to? Are you in executive session now?
Yes, and it's going to be, I think, in total, across the two items, it'll end up being a good 45 minutes.
Are you guys coming after?
So they will come back.
Okay.
But 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 when they come back, because of the nature of the way sick leave bank things are voted, all that would really, I mean, and you might still want to get this just for the public record, but it would be like, we've moved to accept the sick leave bank request as presented in executive session. People would vote yes or no, and then they would say, now we adjourn. There won't be there's nothing terribly interesting that would happen. But that's up to you.
Okay, I think I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna leave this up and put a put a sign up on our our computer here.
Yep, and at some point, I will be going into the executive session. So it'll just be, you know, the two of you. And then we'll all come out. Does does Jake normally? Should somebody text you when we're getting ready to come out?
Yeah, yeah, that would be good. Jake, yeah, Jake has got my number if he wants to.
Okay, I'll just make sure that as we're closing up there, he sends a text to you so you can jump back and and flip the switch.
Okay, cool. Sounds good.
Great.
All right, thanks.
Yep.
The diamonds are a good spirit.
Just as I left the room, I heard, I think Steve say something. But I have no idea.
He's still here. He just keep him on the phone. He's fine.
Jake, did you text Jack? I don't have his phone number.
I will text him right now. Thanks for the reminder, Joe.
Okay, it is 10:56. We are, we are back in open session. We still have Steve Miller, even though you can't see his face on the screen. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
You mean, we don't have four more minutes of stuff to talk about?
We don't.
That's five?
So. I think Jake had a comment. Did you have a comment, Jake?
I was just asking to hold up until I can make sure that Willie Nuts back on. And my, my phone has like done something that.
That will take four minutes to fix.
I see Willie Nat.
Thanks Jake, still here.
Thanks, Jack.
I can't remember who made the motion to adjourn. Julia made the most enjoy. I have a second.
Second.
Curtis seconds, all in favor.
Bo and I.
Conri, I.
Constantine, I.
You can tell by the way I move my walk off my eye.
Green, I.
Mill, I was thinking, I will survive to go with what Curtis was saying.
10:57 PM and with all the lovely singing, we have adjourned. Thank you. Jake, I'm sorry that couch behind you is not more comfortable and you can't just throw it there and sleep there for the night.
I'm good. I got my second wind. I'm, I'm good to go now.
All right. Get something to eat. Dinner time.
Long night. Thank you.
Drive safely, Jake.
Thank you. See ya.
That's why I was off camera at the very beginning of the meeting. I was inhaling my dinner.